Hello, everybody. Sorry our closed session took a little bit long, longer than initially planned. Waiting on our team to get back here.
Hi, everyone.
All right, welcome, everybody. The council will convene from closed session. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilman on items two and three, not one. Received direction on those items that were put in last week, taken. Thank you.
Thank you, and then we'll move into our pledge of allegiance. Marnie, will you lead us with your team? Pledge of allegiance.
Yeah. I know we mentioned it.
Yeah.
Edward, who the flag. Again.
I believe it just to the by of the United States of America. Superficially, for which stands one nation. It's both they were to get this from.
Move on now to proclamations and presentations. We have.
Mr. Mayor, staff would like to recommend hearing item number 10 first due to staff wanting to feel the larger item.
Well, there's a proclamation recognizing the staff for their service dedication to the safety of the city of Coachella. Abel.
Staff can join, council can join us in the front.
All right, this is a city of Coachella, California proclamation, and it reads, whereas a Hurricane Hillary made landfall as a tropical storm on Sunday, August 20th, 2023. An additional monsoon storm entered on February, September 1st, and whereas both storms resulted in heavy rainfall that brought three to four inches of rain, impacting the city of Coachella resulting in significant damage and flood, flash flooding that impacted city infrastructure. And whereas city staff responded in deploying preventative flood measures throughout the city before the storm. And whereas city staff responded on the cleanup and recovery of both storms at a, on a timely manner. Now, therefore, I, Stephen A. Hernandez, Mayor of the city and the city council, by the powers vested in us, do hereby recognize our city staff and Gabriel Maritza, Jeanette Caesar, Joanne Vincent Vincent, Jason Reset, Renee Sarah Pete, Joel Ramon Ricardo, Eddie Aaron Mario Jose, Horacio Ray Alberto Alberto, Alex Hector Jose, Tony Castulo Jesus Gustavo Roberto Domingo Cesar, Jose Ifan Pedro Edgar Jose Jesse Jose. It's a lot of Jose's work for us. Angel Roberto Julio Miguel and Justin. And Maria Carmen también. Para que no se los olviden. Hola Maria Carmen. We want to thank you all for the work that you all did. I'm really proud of everybody. I think when we compare notes, and I have another job where I get to compare how cities responded. And you know, you're only as good as your team and the people you have around you. And, and I think you know, what I was, what we witnessed was a very clear message from the leadership, from, from, you know, the executive team to the staff and to the community about really preparing for this storm and really be being ready to take it on. And so there's three phases of the emergency. There was the preparation before, there was during, and there was the after. And if you look at how well we, we did, it's because of our team. Now, when there is a storm, you know, you are going to see rain and you're going to see, you know, water moving and areas will get flooded. But I think the telling, you know, kind of or story is, is how well we did after the rain. And so when you look at Coachella in both situations within a day and clearly within 48 hours, all of our major arterials, all of our localized flooding, all of the areas that were damaged or at least assessed in terms of non-passable were, were mitigated and cleared. And we did an excellent job in, in really preparing and getting through the storm. I think we're, we're going to have more emergencies coming. There's a lot of factors, you know, that are changing, whether they be climate change, whether they be more monsoons that are hitting us, whether they be heat events, whether they be, you know, it's starting to get even colder sometimes in the winter. And aliens now. Neftele said that the Congress of Mexico has identified aliens. Anyhow, there's going to be more emergencies and, and the team that we have, it's a good one, and we're, we're ready to go to war with them to protect our community. And so I just thank you all. And if you guys can come up here, we have a beautiful, beautiful presentation, and I'm going to let my council colleagues say a few words as well.
Like I, Mayor said it all, I thank you all for your work and for continued work in our city. We look forward to continue growing and making sure the city grows, and it's a partnership. Obviously, we get to be here and vote a policy, create jobs, but at the end of the day, you know, we're not there implementing the work. It's all of you. They're doing that work on a day-to-day basis. So we really very grateful for, for the work all of you do every day and every night. They're doing that work on a day-to-day basis. So we really are very grateful for, for the work all of you do every day and every night.
Everybody takes some, I speak weird today because I put on braces and sometimes I sound like like I'm 12 now. I just want to say thank you to everybody, especially Maritza and Resad and everybody. I remember driving right before the rain came, and I saw the Public Works crew people, staff putting up all the sandbags. And then I came out of the coffee shop and I was like, oh, here comes, we've got to go hide now. So and but they were doing all that great work and making sure that it supported the city staff and also the tenants that the city has and some of the different businesses and giving it to the different things. So, you know, really commend the work they did. And a lot of the you know, the unsung heroes, the work that goes in behind the scenes, and that's the people that we always have to recognize every day because without their help, we can't really, you know, this room would have been flooded, right? You know, without their help in different ways. So, thank you.
I mean, they've said pretty much everything, but yeah, we're incredibly grateful for everyone. I know that some of you spent the night at the EOC. And, you know, you were trying to help out our residents who had so many concerns and questions and taking calls, even to the point where we were taking calls from residents from other cities, which was very funny. And then, you know, our team, what they were doing is contacting other cities and saying, hey, what's a good contact number for you? So we weren't even, you know, our staff wasn't even like pushing people away and saying like, this is not our issue. They were trying to find, you know, contacts for, for other folks to be able to get the assistance that they needed. And while a lot of us were, you know, sheltering in place, many of you were out there and some of us were, you know, trying to do everything that we could, but you guys were out there, you know, you handled what you had to do. And, you know, you did it. And so we're incredibly grateful. So, thank you so much. And you guys are very deserving of everything. So, thank you.
There's already been a lot of good words that have been shared, but I just want to touch a bit on the partnership and the collaboration between all the agencies, our executive team, you know, our employees who are boots on the ground. You know, it's a lot of work. It really, really is. And I know I heard it from our employees that it's physically wearing. You know, they're out there three days, all day, at night. And my concern was also their public safety because we forget that they're out, you know, and there's not a lot of light out there. There's like two, three foot of water that they're trying to drain. It isn't easy. It's challenging. And I know that they felt a lot of frustration, but they still stayed there. They still stayed there even as frustrating as it was, even as physically daunting that it was, they still stayed. And so I want to thank all of you for your hard work, for your dedication. And then I see our law enforcement in the back and our fire team. So what was it like, maybe two weeks after we got hit with water again? And, you know, you guys were out there helping people out of their vehicles, walking them back and forth. It's a lot of work. And they didn't question anything. They weren't like afraid to get in the water. No, they walked. They walked to the vehicle. If somebody wanted to get carried out, they carried them out and walked them back. So I want to thank everybody, our safety teams, our executive team, our employees. You know, you went above and beyond, and we're forever grateful to you. So, thank you.
So just one last thing, and just to, for, to get you guys to just connect the dots a little bit. Because of the work you are doing, I, I think you all need to just kind of give yourself a big round of applause and clap on the back. But if you look at how our community responded and our citizens responded, the amount of trust they have in us in, in order to prepare for the emergency, I haven't seen it in such a long time. And I can tell you that the trust that the community has in us when we say, hey, there's an emergency or something's going on, and they responded, that it's pretty high. And that's, that's coming because of your work and your efforts. And maybe not all of them listen. Maybe some of them still got some issues, and that's what we do. We help them figure out these issues. But a good majority of people, like they responded, and we saw it when we were giving out the sandbags. We saw it because at night, like the, the, like people were off the streets. They weren't on the streets as much as, as, as in other situations. And, and I think that has a lot to do with the confidence that they see in our team and all of you. So, thank you. I know we, I know, I know we can do better. We're always going to do better, right? Because there's some community members that say, hey, you guys, you're not good, you're not perfect. But we can do better, and we're always going to strive to do better. But I just want to just thank you because you're growing a good confidence within the community, and you're helping us deliver those messages. And that's, that's worth every cent. And so a big round of applause and thank you again. And get up here because we have a whole bunch of proclamations. If not, I'll go to you. Javier, he's not here. All right. Well, we have a presentation. We'll give it to him later. And then we have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. Do we have a representative from Suicide Prevention Month? Okay, well.
No, 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 that's fine. I just want to read it. But, you know, whereas in 2021, suicide was the 11th leading cause of death in the United States, and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 10 to 44. And whereas in the United States in 2021, there were an average of 132 suicides per day resulting in over 48,000 suicides. Whereas the stigma associated with mental health conditions and suicide. It's all good, right? Suicide-ality works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking lifesaving help and further traumatizing survivors of suicide loss and people with lived experiences of suicide. And whereas everyone has a role to play in preventing suicide and can learn suicide risk and warning signs and encourage those who struggle to seek help. And whereas organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention envision a world without suicide and are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide throughout research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost or or struggle. And whereas everyone has a role to play in preventing suicide and can learn suicide risk and warning signs and encouraging those who struggle to seek help. Now, therefore, City of Coachella recognized Suicide Prevention Week, which started on Sunday and ends on Saturday. So.
With that, that concludes our proclamations. And we will do some presentations. All right, we do have a presentation from the Center for Employment Training. Is there anyone would be making that presentation?
I'm present.
Yes, Melissa, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So I'm Melissa Korea, the Center Director at CET, the Center for Employment Training. I just wanted to introduce, we've been in business for over 50 years, and we've been in Coachella in India for quite a while as well. And I just wanted to make you aware of some of the programs we have. I do have a slideshow, a PowerPoint that you can review. But our mission is really focused on farm workers. The majority of our students are from a farm worker background. They are either farm workers themselves or one of their relatives is. And we have many, many grants to get students into our programs, which are the Business Office Administration Program, HVAC, and also green building construction. So we're also working on the Prospera Grant with you, excuse me, as well. So our program isn't just that we teach these skills. We also take them to the next level where what's really great about it is we teach all of these students basic life skills. And we teach them how to do an interview and how to shake a hand and how to do a resume. And then we help them with interviews and getting them jobs. And then we follow up with our students for years after that to make sure that they're still employed and still successfully working in the workforce. So with that, I would say, does anyone have any questions about CET?
I just want to thank you for your years of service to the city of Coachella and the Eastern Coachella Valley and its residents. CET has played a vital role and continues to play a vital role. And we look forward to working with you to really prepare our workforce for the current economy, but also the future economy that's coming fast with respect to renewables, etc. Just the things that are changing in our society. So I want to thank you. And if there are any questions, council, or but I just want to thank you for your presentation.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Move on now to a presentation by Raíces Cultura and All Children Thrive California Youth Development Policy Work in the city of Coachella.
Hello.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening. I'm Marnie Navarro. I'm the Director of Raíces Cultura. Thank you, City Council, for having us on your agenda today. We know it's a very busy agenda. So we're here today to share. The last slide. We're here today to share our work for All Children Thrive California. And it's essentially, it was essentially a two-year project where we were asked to kind of imagine what we would do as an organization collaborating with local council, local leadership. What would, what could Coachella look like if we put children first? So just to give a quick snapshot of today's presentation, so we know where we're going. I'll talk briefly about Raíces, what we do, who we are. You'll meet the team. We'll intro to what ACT California is. ACT has specific action areas. And for the work here in the city of Coachella, we selected youth development and civic engagement. So our our, that will contextualize my presentation. That is the work that we're doing here with the youth. We'll go into what ACT California specifically is for the city of Coachella. There's 18 cities statewide, I think, and Coachella is one of them. We'll review our policy proposals. So as part of our work, we were, it was one of the things we were tasked to do is to come up with a sample policy that we would present to council to potentially collaborate, which was to create a fund that would support a youth center. And then for our closing, the ambassadors will share their whys, their personal impact of what this would mean to them or what the work has meant to them. And if we have time, we'll do a Q and A. I love this quote, "There is no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about." So that's what we're going to share today. What does Coachella and the youth of Coachella care about? So about Raíces.
Am I supposed to say five words?
Okay. All right. So about Raíces, I'm going to read you our mission statement really quickly. We're committed to the empowerment of youth and adult residents through self, through artistic self-expression and cultural inclusivity. We promote the preservation of cultural traditions and development of personal voice, creativity, and civic engagement through the arts, all in service of transformational justice. That's where our office is. And on the next slide, which I have to do myself, I have to remember to do that. This is a slide that is basically an overview of all of the programs, services, and events that we offer. Everything is free of charge to every participant. And this is a photo of a group of our youth at the Behind the Scenes Tour with Golden Voice for the Coachella Music and Arts Festival. Thank you to Golden Voice for doing that for us, Paul and the art department there. So I really wanted to include this slide because it connects to the past work Raíces has done related to a research, a youth-led research project. So it's referred to as the YPAR report, the Youth Participatory Action Research. And during that data collection, they did needs assessments, asset mapping, things like that. And so in that report, these were the needs that were identified at that time, which was 2012 to 2015, that were youth-specific and adult-specific. And so that report is being used to make investments today. And over the last, I would say, five years, improved infrastructures, safe spaces, LGBTQAI+ spaces, more after-school programs. So thank you for doing that. For the city, it really shows. And which is great because it connects us to research today to figure out what do youth need today? Now that these resources, these needs are being addressed with resources, what is today's snapshot? So this is our team. Council, can you see the present? Do you have the presentation? So we have 14 youth ambassadors that are currently involved on this project. With me today from the team is Belén, who's a youth ambassador, Ulisa, Leo, our ACT coach, Crystal from Sacramento, Glara, who's staff at Raíces, and on Zoom, we have Juana and Julian. They will all present very shortly during this presentation. Any questions so far? Great. Am I moving too fast? Okay, we've got the stopwatch on over here. We're like, go. What is ACT California? So it stands for All Children Thrive California. It is a, as I mentioned, a statewide initiative where it's trying to connect community members and policymakers together to imagine their city. When you put children, what does it look like when you put children first? It focuses on a community-led movement. It's all about transformation and direct action and policymaker community partnerships. So through those partnerships, you're able to build networks and resources and ultimately redesign cities to some, to some extent, to create thriving environments. ACT has four very specific goals. They want to shape perspective. They want to innovate through collaboration. They want to shift power into the hands of community members. And then they want to create sustainable change, not something that fizzles out, but a way to continue it forward for future generations. This is a really good graphic because sometimes we don't think about all the things that impact children. But there are very obvious and visible things and a lot of invisible impacts for a child to be okay in the world. There are three phases of ACT. So it's a two-year project. And during that, those two years, there's the engage phase, which is ACT 1.0. The grow phase, which is ACT. The grow phase, which is ACT two point O, and augmentation or three point O, which is where we are now. So in engage, you get the cities and the community-based organizations in partnership. You figure out what do we need? What does it look like here? In the grow, you bring in additional partners that can support that work. You develop, you define your scope of work. And in augmentation, you complete your scope of work by expanding and exponentiating resources and sustainability. So let's talk about ACT one point O specifically here in the City of Coachella. I don't know if y'all saw our billboard that ran on Grapefruit Street in March and April. That was super cool. Leo, that's a quote from Leo right here. That was fun. So what did we actually do in the first phase of ACT? Well, once we got the partnership going, we reviewed community data. What was, what was the previously, what were all the previously defined needs? What were the resources? Where were the gaps? We created a youth ambassador group because if you're gonna do youth work, they should always be at the center of that work. We discussed human development and volunteerism for youth through modules. Through learning modules, we conducted listening sessions. We had youth interviews and community surveys. Yeah, so this is basically a graphic that is reflective of our entire one point O work. So in terms of our community data, we asked a lot, they were anonymous. Our sample was, our sample set was fifty respondents. It was all anonymous because we were asking things about trauma, childhood, adverse childhood experiences, really things people don't like to talk about. So we asked about those things. And then we asked, what are your current needs today? Have you experienced food insecurity in the last week, in the last six months, things like that? And so this is the wrap-up of that data. It's a very limited snapshot for this presentation. But basically, people were revealing these interpersonal dimensions for the first time. Usually, it's, we need food, we need you know, affordable housing. And for the first time, we could start to see, I have a lack of self-esteem. I need mental health services. I lack mental health service access. I feel lonely. I'm isolated. I'm lacking spaces for personal development, social development. And for the low income, we were specifically asking who is under thirty thousand a year. And then, of course, all the other needs are important. There's still needs, but it was the first time we started to see these much more internal landscapes for people to disclose in a public survey. So for this slide, I'd like to turn it over to Yuli, please.
So as youth ambassadors, we conducted several listening sessions. Within these listening sessions, we identified three major trends. We identified some supporting trends, some challenging trends, and some unmet needs that our community is facing. Some supporting trends would be the new parks, the youth programs, the library, and many more that you guys, the council has helped support. But that could be improved. Some identifying trends that we saw were the inadequate school lunches, as well as the family dynamics within our community. The unmet needs that our community is lacking is you, is the funding for youth services, as well as sustainable programs and mentorships, just to name a few. So now let's talk about ACT two point O. This is a picture of the ambassadors with one of our state, our act, our, our state partner, or our state coach, ACT. The ultimate goal of ACT two point O was to create policy which benefit the youth, to engage to strategic partnerships and to activate youth and civic engagement. This all must be a youth-led process. In the second and third phase of ACT, we recruited new youth ambassadors while conducting community surveys as well. We held one-on-one meetings with stakeholders and ambassador-led listening sessions. We also canvassed within our, our community and held bi-weekly meetings with our ambassadors, create, doing digital storytelling and brainstorming the policy that we wanted. And held community educational forums. I will now turn it over to my fellow ambassador, Belen.
We learned what policy is and try to benefit you. It is a form of law, regulation, procedure, or a course of action proposed by the government, a business, or individuals, or a combination of collaborative strategy. It is commonly reflected in resource allocations, also seeks to define issues and implement strategies produce, that produce a positive result. This is a picture of us canvassing around the neighborhood to local businesses.
Second street right there.
Our youth policy proposal is to create a youth development center, teen center hub with a base investment of two hundred and fifty thousand per year minimum funded by the City of Coachella to be in consideration of a five-to-ten-year investment to create economic opportunities for youth and invest in ECB youth commitment. Also have youth scholarship funds for higher education and trade schools and ask for city in-kind support. I will now turn you over to Leo.
So the Coachella Youth Policy Proposal would address the following aspects of youth development. Personal and professional skills, career info and job training, college and university prep and resources, tutoring, mentorships, mental health and family services, wellness and nutrition, as well as arts and culture. The youth po- policy would be funded by the City of Coachella, and we've identified different funds or possible funds. One would be to propose a vacant city building instead of, and to renovate it instead of insuring a new building in order to minimize costs. Possible funds would be develop, developer funds, cannabis tax, reboot, rebuilding, rebuilding plan, ARPA funds, and other possible funds would be the TTTCC funds and foundation slash grant funding. We would like a consideration of five-to-ten-year investment. And we would review general plans for the youth services and reassess the needs, funds, and operations at three and eight years for long-term strategic plan and sustainability. For the, we will, it would include economic opportunities for youth, paid internships, programs, stipends, and equitable incentives. It would invest in ECB youth commitment, equitable salaries and benefits for a minimum of two youth center staff positions, ages from eighteen to twenty-four, and a minimum of five paid semi-annual internships for high school students to include a variety of age, age ranges. It would include youth scholarship funds for higher education and trade schools and funding and city in-kind support for youth-led community events and cultural excursions. This is another, another photo of us going canvassing around the neighborhood. And that is the
Thank you, Leo. Great job, everything. Thank you, everybody. Yes, thank you. So before we move on to the conclusion of our presentation, Council, I wanted to emphasize that part of our ACT work was to work with a policy coach, a policy consultant, to draft a sample of what a policy could look like to support developing a youth fund that was a youth development center. The easiest way we figured we could do that was to create a youth fund. And that would allow us to bring other investments to support the fund that is specifically for the center. So in front of you with your packets, that packet is a really much more in-depth look at our work over the last two years, but included is that sample policy. And we offer it as a possible blueprint for future collaboration. And we really thank you for our time. As before we close, I want, like, for the ambassadors to share their whys.
This youth center would have meant a lot to me. As a new adult in this crazy world, I can recognize the missed opportunities I had. I know school provides a lot of support career-wise to lead us to majors, but they don't tell us where these late, these majors will later lead. I think, I wish I had some, a supportive space where I had mentors to guide me to to pursue my passions and things that I enjoyed. And I just hope by creating this youth center, the next generation of youth are able to have the opportunity to see where they actually want to be when they enter adulthood. Yeah. Thank you.
A teen center would have impacted my youth by offering a second home in my community. The environment around us shapes us into the kind, the kind of person we are and will become. A majority of teens might come from poor situations in their households. To have a space for teens to introduce similar beings that share a common desire for a better future has endless possibilities.
Juana, are you there? I think you can activate your audio. We have Juana and Julian joining us online.
Yes. Building a youth center for other members aside from youth would be a great opportunity for individuals to relieve stress and build connections. I personally believe that the youth has been truly affected and impacted by the COVID nineteen, bringing many youth, including adults, to fall into depression, lose their jobs, and including dropout rates. Many of our youth, including myself, are first generations that have a hard time building connections or even understanding their surroundings because nowadays everyone is stuck on social media instead of socializing. A youth center would be much of a huge opportunity for youth to connect, distract themselves, and build a safe space for them to be at. You sometimes need to set themselves free to build both a healthier mindset and physical my, physical, both physical and mindset. Building a youth center would be a benefit for future generations. I personally have have two siblings that look after me and I care for them to live the best moments of themselves, focusing on their development in school, aside setting them to become healthier and not fall into a cycle of depression. I want them to strive for success and realize the opportunities they have out there. I want youth to be successful and have a safe space where they can interact, learn about opportunities that they have and they offer them, and just lead them to success.
Thank you, Juana. That's great. Julian, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Marnie. Having this youth center would teach and benefit current students and other youth to learn how to utilize their available resources. By utilizing their resources, they can learn how to create their own projects and lead their own interests into expect, just expanding their skills. And I, I know Mayor, you have a daughter that is entering her junior year of high school and working with her in high school. When I was in high school, I've learned on how amazing her leadership skills were. And we created an amazing team and bond as we worked together in club work. And I just know that if she had this community's oh, resource, just like many other youth, they will learn how to take their school, through their skills outside of their school, and expand it onto their community. And with the resources available in the center, they would just learn not only to build their, their own skills and own resume and their own interest in leadership. They can benefit their own community to make it a safer and equitable environment for students and all youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. That's amazing. Leo?
As someone that just turned eighteen, who is attending the local community college and is planning on staying here in the valley for the next two years, the center would aid others like me that want to be involved and become contributing members of their community. Mentorships, internships, and the like would be incredibly helpful for adolescents still learning to navigate life. Because of this, we would love to have your continuous support in our vision and our work as it would benefit the entire community and bring forth new opportunities as well as so support for today's youth. I know I'm not the only one who feels this way as we've held the listening sessions and we've conducted surveys. And we know from that, that other youth, such as classmates, parents and their kids, have these concerns and would like to see change. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council members, and city staff, we want to thank you for your time, attention, and the opportunity to serve. On behalf of the All Children Thrive Initiative, I came all the way from Sacramento. I've served as their coach. It's really, they, they've been teaching me, but I'm a collaborative coach with them for over a year. And we want to recognize Marnie and Raices' leadership, their investment, as well as applaud these youth change agents for their courage, their commitment and service. So we want to thank you for what you've been doing and what you're doing here in Coachella.
Any question?
There's any questions, Council?
I did, I did want to touch a bit on the importance of addressing mental health. I think what happens a lot is that even as adults, we have feelings and emotions that we're embarrassed to share with others. And so what it does, it kind of leads to well, it's okay, take pictures of us. What it leads to is, is a negative way of, of expression. You know, I had, I had a cousin, that was maybe, it's been close to a year now. And he committed suicide. He attempted, he attempted it once, and then he was successful the second time. And the reality is that a lot of this continues on to adulthood when it's not addressed correctly or positively. It's incredibly important to have a space where you can share those emotions and feelings and not be embarrassed about how you're feeling because sometimes we have feelings that, you know, are not very positive. And it's embarrassing to share those feelings, but it's normal to have them. And so having those discussions is incredibly vital to all of us. And it also then helps in the family, is having those discussions with our parents and our grandparents or other siblings. It really does teach us how to interact and how to communicate and express ourselves with others because what happens is that we get frustrated and we kind of shut down. And so it, it really is extremely important. And so I completely support this and want to navigate how we can make this happen. But I'm, I'm very proud of all of you to address some of these issues that are happening in the family, at school. And there's a lot of stress sometimes in these homes. And there isn't many outlets. And so many of our kiddos or youth feel like they're kind of stuck at home. And they don't know how to share. They don't know how to get out. Perhaps like your parents don't have the money or the funding to put them in a sports, in some type of sport or program. I'll tell you that as a single parent, it was extremely difficult. And so I, I look forward to how we can partner together. And I'm extremely proud of all of you. And going, you know, door-to-door, walking the downtown. I mean, I could have never thought of doing that during, or the same age as you are. So I'm extremely proud of you guys and the vision and the goal of where you're going with this.
You know, twelve years ago, I, I was in your shoes. And so it's very cool to see you all there. Gabe Beddoes was back there. He's, he gets shy, doesn't talk. You raise your hand, you know, you know who you are. I gave, went to my Chicano Studies class when I was a junior in high school. And he came in and, and at the time, I, I, the only thing I was like really focused on was wrestling. I wasn't in, in government or anything. I was just a wrestler. But I was also Chicano, I had just discovered Chicanoism. a wrestler. But I was also Chicano, I was, I had just discovered Chicanoism.
Look, you know, budgets, they tend to be priority, uh, a reflection of priorities and values of cities, right? And we've always in the city, we we've always said, hey, we're gonna value our youth and we're gonna value our seniors. And what we've done for our seniors is that we've we've built them a really dope senior center. And we we pick them up, we drop them off, we take them to programs, we have, we have folks that, uh, uh, you know, uh, taking them to the doctors or and there's mental health services, they work out, they feed them, et cetera. And we and we hire, we hire staff to do that. There's three people over there. And I was just thinking, I was like, well, we love our kids, but why why aren't we doing that? And like having a facility that's for our youth, that says the exact same thing, that we value them as well. You know, so that in that facility, that, you know, we can provide mental health services and God only knows that adults need it too, right? Cause I get, I get teased on on Facebook. My mom was a schizophrenic bipolar. Uh, and so I grew up with a lot of aces growing up. And, uh, and people still try to, to know my story will be like, oh, bear, you know, you'll be just like your mom. I said, cool. Actually, I think she's a beautiful person. You know what I mean? And so it's learning how to, how to, how to gra- gain strength in that story and gain wisdom from that story. But a lot of people, if you don't have the right mentorship, if you don't have the right job trainings, if you don't have the right, you know, folks that can guide you. Or or, you know, a little bit of money too, right? Cause I I saw in the proposal, if you'd like to have a little bit of money. You know what I mean? Like, you, you can go easily another way. You know, and I think everybody up here has had an opportunity and have seen, you know, just, just how great our lives have benefited from having good mentors, from having been exposed to, uh, you know, different internships or different educational opportunities, different jobs, different mental health services. And those things have like just played a huge dividends. And I do have a daughter that's, uh, in high school. She's, she's a junior, you know, and and you guys probably knows the Bella. If you don't, then that's her fault. And you know, you guess she gets, she gets, she gets to know you guys. But, but you know, i- it's, it's very imperative that as a community, we we put our values where, you know, our money where our values are at. And I, I too was sixteen. I didn't, I didn't have, uh, you know, I wasn't involved in Raisas. It wasn't available at the time. But what we did at sixteen is we got involved politically right away. So we started mobilizing and knocking on doors and helping to run campaigns. And that's what informed my practice to this day. And and that was, it was a lot of youth-led initiatives and and it's cool things that that you are doing, that you've learned. I, I personally think, and I love the fact that you provided options. Um, that, that your timetable is not ambitious enough. Uh, I, I saw it like, you know, it says, it says, you know, eight years. I'm thinking, no, we can do this like in two years, three years. And we can really try to move on it, but we need leaders, right? We need people to step up and say, hey, we're gonna be, uh, we're gonna work with you to be drivers of change. And I know, cause you guys got dope mentors too around you guys. And I know they've been on the phone in Sacramento, cause I've gotten some calls from Sacramento and saying, hey, you know what I mean? Like, we're willing to help you fund this. You know what I mean? And 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 I think that's something that I think as a, as a community and as a city, we should get behind. We should get behind and and I agree with you that we should look at development impact fees and and create on our dip study. A little, a little, a little, uh, a little fee there that funds a youth center. I think with childcare center would be something we can look at too. Uh, if there are any remaining park with dollars, maybe what we do is we buy land right away. We go in and buy land. And then, uh, and then we start pre- creating a little plan around it. Where we start thinking through what a, a center looks like, right? Because Barney is just one person. You're gonna need partners. You're gonna need partnerships, right? Like mental health partners, job training partners, internship partners, you know, healthcare partners. And so how does that look like? And that's a whole other phase that you get to actually get involved in if, if you, you know, if you keep with it. If not, Barney will do it, but. But, but I, I think that's like the, uh, that's for us, it's, it's, it's doubling down on our values and and students. And and our youth, they're, they're up there with our seniors. I mean, we prioritize them in a lot of different ways. Now, I know the city administrator is gonna be like, man, you guys wanna do everything and and, and yeah, so what? What's wrong with that? You know, this idea that, that we can't have our cake and eat it too, to me is, is, is old school thinking. We can't have our cake and we can eat it too. And so I, I really, really believe that, that working with you and finding some leaders and 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 drivers of that change. And I'm willing to help you guys. I'm willing to also help put forward and, and say, hey, you know, we're gonna go and look for private philanthropy too. See if we can get a match on this money. You know, and and that, that center, believe me, we all work and pull and push and and go like all in the same direction. We'll get the money. I think we can get at least a, a fifteen million dollar, you know, budget allocation. Something, I mean, that's gotta be our goal. The library was about eleven and a half million, twelve mil. And then we, you know, our senior center expansion was about another, well, two mil, but then we did a little remodel or three mil. To you, me and you, like, that's a lot of money, but to the city, that's how we work, you know, fourteen, fifteen, we throw up numbers like forty million, like, we're gonna build a bridge, it'll be forty-five million, you know, so that's just numbers that we're used to. But I, I really do believe it's time that we put our, our money where our values are and, and our kids and it only makes sense, right? Like, you look at the medium ages, community, community of Coachella, the medium ages twenty-six, half of it's still under eighteen. So that means our better days are ahead of us. Cause we got a, we got a young, young, young population and there is a cool sublime song that used to say you can't fight against the youth. And we're not gonna fight against them. We're gonna work with them to embrace them and mo- and and do what we need to do. So thank you guys for coming and there's more.
Really quick, Barney, I think that, so we have been pushing for a health and wellness center. And I think that was originally in the T C C grant, our first round. But if I wanna say, I think we, Selena, I think we had to remove that because it, it required a housing portion to, in the downtown. It's unpropose in the, in the, in the, in the second round? Okay, yeah, so that was something that we pushed for a great deal because we do need a facility. And so hopefully, you know, if that comes through, it just opens up, you know, a space, you know, for you to have these type of programs. Because finding money for the programming is one thing, but having a facility is different. So I'm very hopeful that we get that through so that we can have that wellness center. Yeah.
I would be remiss to not especially thank Selena Jimenez, Maritza Martinez and Dr. Martin for their support. They're why we're all here to be able to present today for bringing the partnership two years ago. So thank you.
While we're, while we're getting that picture, I normally don't speak, but I am, you know, big advocate for the youth. And I think that you guys represent the very few of our youth nowadays that represent boldness and courageousness. And I just wanna give you a few words of encouragement because we live in a very fast-paced world. And like council, um, mayor said, this project can take a few years. So during that time, I don't want you to get impatient. I just want to encourage you to stay focused and keep your faith. And just remember three key points, um, just keep your eye on the destination. Enjoy the process. You're gonna fail, but you're gonna learn from those failures and that is what's going to help you grow. And it is what is going to teach you what you need to do to be successful. And then lastly, there are power in numbers. So make sure you continue to pull in more youth so that they can join you in your purpose. And with that, you will be able to continue to get more funding. Okay?
You're welcome.
Look at me real quick. Okay, one, two, three.
All right, we have another, uh, presentation on Bagduma and Veterans Park amenities recommendation. I'll participate when it comes to, uh, Bagduma. I won't participate when it comes to Veterans Memorial.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the presentation before you this evening is just, uh, bringing forth a couple of, uh, minor repairs and enhancements to some of the city's green spaces. They're kind of more minor, since they are within the city manager's capacity to move forward. Um, but we wanted to bring these forward and get your feedback on them before moving them forward. Um, the first one is about Bagduma Park. And this item has gone to our parks commission in the past. We just have not identified funding. So funding, um, would come from general fund at this time. We don't have a grant for the funding. Um, the, the idea would be to install in the red, red area that you see at Bagduma Park, which is, uh, basically parallel to, uh, Frederick Street on the back end. That is, uh, kind of near the space where we have the fire, um, the Fourth of July event. And that space isn't really activated. Um, we have had several interests and committee members to have horseshoe pits and kind of have several, so that they can do kind of like a tournament play. So our vision there would be to do four to six, um, four to six sets. Um, and the installation cost, we're looking at about three to four thousand each. And, um, we're recommending up to six sets in that location. And we think that that'll fit nicely. And then we're proposing something similar to what you see there, but without the grass. So that is the first one. I'm happy to entertain any comments on that.
About time. There's lots of trees around them too. Importantly, we have shade. That's that big old empty space, right? Yep. That's cool. No, we don't have to go to Idaho anymore.
All right, well then, thank you for the feedback. So I think I have my answer on that. We'll bring that back next meeting. And then this item, um, so when Veterans Park was constructed, um, because I think it, engineering was the lead on this, but there was a total of, the, the picture you see before you, there has total of ten poles. Um, that's been upgraded from the number that is actually out there. So currently we have four on one side at the stage and four on the other. But we are missing two branches. Um, and so I think the reason that one of the branches wasn't installed at that time um, was because it would have created an odd number on either side. So the Coast Guard was not included in, in the flags that are currently flown. And since an, an additional branch has been added to the military, which is a space force. So we're recommending adding two additional poles, one on either side in order to be able to fly all of our flags. And that cost would be about seven thousand dollars.
Good.
So that would be a change that you'll see and we'll be able to get that done before the next Veterans event. Um, the last item is regarding the small fountain that is, um, near City Hall. Um, we have had it vandalized and so we're suggesting a recommendation. Uh, we have had, we have had discussions with the manufacturer of the original fountain. Then they no longer have the mold to recreate the same fountain. But the bottom bowl is still good. So we found a similar piece that could replace the centerpiece and you see that on the far right. And our recommendation is to purchase that one. It's not a, a big amount to purchase it. It's similar dimensions. And then we cost eight hundred dollars to purchase the fountain. We would install it in the existing fountain bowl and, um, stain it to match. And then we're recommending that the bottom be used as a more of a planter, um, to provide, you know, it would provide nice greenery, some nice color there. And it would also eliminate the oversplash issue we have because it is a smaller fountain. We tend to have a lot of oversplash in that area. So those are all of my items and I think I'm hearing support for all of them. So we will bring those back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, we do have, uh, one more presentation and this is a presentation by, by, uh, Rafa Pines. What is that, like Spanish or French?
I have no idea. All right, well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, during the, uh, during previous labor negotiations with the sanitary, uh, miscellaneous and mid-managed bargaining units, the city agreed that it would perform a manpower study for the utilities department. The department had, uh, the department and employees had raised concerns that the utility may be understaffed. And that certain operations typical of water and wastewater utilities are not being performed due to staffing constraints. Does the purpose of this study was and continues to be to analyze the process and tasks of the utilities and then determine appropriate staffing levels based on industry comparisons and other process measurement techniques. As an example, some of the questions that the study tried to a- address were the following. How many full-time employees are required to maintain X amount of miles of water pipelines and sewer pipeline mainlines? Uh, we have about a hundred and thirty miles of water mainlines. We have about a hundred miles of sewer mainlines. Another question is how many full-time employees are required to maintain X amount of service connections? We have now about ten thousand water service connections and about eight thousand sewer service connections. These connections have been increasing over many years as the city has, uh, you know, doubled in size, increased by ten percent, twenty percent. And so what we're really trying to figure out is, uh, are the staffing levels of the utilities kind of matching the exponential growth that the city's facing or has faced in previous years? Another question is, how many full-time employees are required to operate and maintain a treatment plant? That has a capacity to treat, you know, X million of gallons of wastewater per day. Um, right now, we're treating about three million gallons of wastewater per day. And so, so these are the types of questions that, uh, that the study is, is analyzing. Um, we compared ourselves to other nearby water and sewer agencies to analyze our staffing levels and to determine if we could improve our service by adding more staff. The consultant will, in a few minutes, go over some of the, the findings of the study in more detail. Also, per the last bargaining M O U, um, with the employees, the city agreed that they would perform a salary survey uh, shortly after completing this manpower study. Uh, and the reason for that is that, is that unfortunately during the last salary survey, um, no adjustments were made to any of the operators. Uh, really because, uh, of how that survey was structured back then. And so what it, what it, what it's done, it's, it's really left these, uh, positions in the utility. It has left these salaries unadjusted for well over ten years. So what happened back, that the last salary survey for the entire city was done maybe sometime back in twenty thirteen, twenty twelve. And at that time, what the city did is, uh, is, is it compared itself to a similar sized city. It probably picked about a dozen cities of similar size. And it compared all of their employees that matched with our employees to then adjust sal- salaries based on an average. What, what that, what that survey missed is the fact that most cities don't have a utility. Most cities don't have a wastewater utility. They don't have a water utility. That's something very unique of our city. And so that study absolutely had no comparables for any of the utility positions. And so those, those were left unadjusted. And so that's, that's, um, something that I think it's starting to have an impact on our recruitment. Especially for our higher level operators, our, our, our salaries tend to, um, not be in part, uh, with some of our neighboring agencies. And so that's, that's another thing that, uh, per the M O U, that's already been agreed upon in previous years. After this, uh, study, the next step is to do the salary survey. Um, with that, I wanna pass it on. We have, I think, Scott and Rebecca, uh, online. And, uh, they're gonna go over a presentation, short presentation that's gonna highlight, uh, some of the key findings of this study.
Yes. Hello, Costolo. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, go ahead. I think you can share your screen or.
Excellent. So I am, uh, I'm gonna have Rebecca, who is my colleague, joining me to share her screen with everyone. So hopefully you can all see it here. Can everybody see it? Okay?
Did, and then it went away.
You see now? Excellent. So, uh, good, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Scott Parker. I'm actually, uh, a senior manager with Rattellus, just to, uh, clarify how you pronounce it. It's actually Greek. Uh, it, believe it or not, it's named after a gentleman, uh, whose name is George Rattellus. He was the guy that started the company. So there you go. Fun fact for the evening. Um, so, um, as Costolo mentioned, uh, uh, we are here tonight to talk about the utilities department staffing study. Just a really quick, uh, background on Rattellus. Uh, we're a local government, uh, and utility management consulting firm. We do, uh, this type of work, rate studies, strategic planning, organizational assessments and staffing studies. Uh, we've done them from over twelve hundred utilities all across the United States as well as local government. So we have a lot of experience in the space. Uh, it was a pleasure working with your staff. Uh, we, we were really, uh, and quite frankly, we were really impressed by what they do with what they have at their disposal. I was, I was noting as you were talking about the, the recent hurricane and the monsoon and everything and how everybody, uh, really pitched in. And I, I can only say from our experience that that, that was not surprising in the least. Uh, we were, we were very, very impressed. So, um, would you go to the next slide, Rebecca? Thank you. So just a really quick, uh, setting the agenda for what you will see here in our presentation. So essentially, uh, we're gonna go through what we were scoped to do. Methodology that we followed. We'll go over some of those benchmarking, uh, results that Costolo talked about. And then, uh, go through the, the observations and, and really spend the majority of our time on the recommendations uh, that came out of this, uh, study and then stand for questions and answer, uh, at the end. So the scope of the project was essentially to, to try to determine the appropriate staffing levels for the utility department under optimal performance conditions. Um, to do that, we looked, we kind of had several key tasks. One was to do that pitch, peer benchmarking analysis that, that was mentioned. Also, uh, to complete an organizational staffing assessment and then do an operational efficiency review. And we do all of those things to sort of look at the holistic, holistically look at the utility and what it's trying to do relative to the resources that it has at its, its disposal. What level of service are you trying to provide? So on and so forth, uh, to your, to your customers and your citizens. From there, we present the findings and the recommendations. And this is, this tonight's presentation is actually accompanied by a report uh, as well as sort of spells out in much more detail, uh, sort of what we recommend here. But the next slide, Rebecca. So to the methodology, uh, we held a kickoff meeting with your leadership team to get the project going. Did a number of individual interviews, uh, and then we did some group interviews as well with, with supervisory as well as frontline staff. We really like to, to get a, a, a cross-section of the organization when we do these because the people who are doing the work and the people who are supervising the work sometimes are in agreement, sometimes not. Uh, so we wanna make sure we get all perspectives, uh, brought to bear. Then we did an, uh, onsite visit to look at your operations and facilities. Uh, myself, I have twenty years in utilities experience before I, before I came to Rattellus. As, as we have members of our team who, who look at, we, we, you know, we really like to get in and look at what, what's actually happening as relates to that infrastructure. Uh, and then we did some other onsite interviews. We also reviewed a whole, uh, litany of data uh, and information provided by the utility. This could be, uh, anything from organizational charts, financial statements. Uh, we look at, uh, work order information. We look at, uh, billing information, all of these things to sort of try to develop that, the, the most holistic picture that we can. And then, uh, we did conduct a peer benchmarking research and we developed a list of initial, initial observations, which we shared with staff. We refined those through the process and then the ultimate recommendations are what you see. Go to the next slide. So let's talk a little bit about benchmarking. So, uh, before we get going, one of the things that's a tendency that we, uh, that we note a lot of times is that benchmarking is seen as some sort of comparison. We're, we're not as good as them. They're not as good as us, such, such as it is. The way we really try to look at benchmarking is, it really can provide good information as it relates to, are you outside of industry norms? Are you way outside? Are you doing things, uh, in a way? Or in a, uh, you know, you're asking more of your staff or less of staff, such as it is, as it relates to, uh, what they're doing to provide a level of service to your customers. So that's really what we do. Uh, we looked at, uh, we, we also try to compare peer agencies. So peer agencies could be anything from uh, organizations that share similar geographies. Maybe they, they provide the same type of services that you all provided your utility group. Uh, it could be things like, uh, similar sized communities, that type of thing. Um, so we had five, uh, benchmarking utilities that we were, uh, looked at for Coachella on the water side and we had three on the wastewater side. And from that, uh, just a, just a couple of results, I think that are, that are worth mentioning here. So one is, is that yours, your, uh, water, uh, services staff is providing, uh, service to about forty-two point three percent more water accounts per full-time equivalent position than the five peer agencies that we compared against. So, uh, a higher, a higher scale of work and scope of work for those folks. It's also, uh, thirty-one, basically thirty-two percent more, uh, water mains per F T, per F T E, uh, than your, than your peer agencies. On the wastewater side, about thirty-seven percent, thirty-seven point six percent more, uh, wastewater accounts per F T than the average, uh, peer utilities. And, um, about fifteen, sixteen percent more. And the reason we look at it, the, 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 I think those are important is because, uh, it sort of shows that you all are getting, uh, quite frankly, you're, you're getting a lot of bang for your buck relative to, uh, the service that those folks provide. But it also shows that there may be some areas that need some attention as relates to staffing. In other words, you may need more staffing. So that's sort of queued in, uh, some of the things that we saw as we, as we did the benchmark. You can go to the next slide, Rebecca. So the next series of, uh, slides, you're actually gonna get into the recommendations, uh, that we put forth here. And, um, the first series is in structure and staffing. So, um, one very thing that jumped right out to us is that, uh, in your water division, uh, there is a, there's definitely a need for, uh, some extra layers of, of supervision, quite frankly. Uh, there is a need to create a chief treatment and distribution operator position to increase that capacity. Uh, the good news is, is you actually have this model already in the sanitary, on the sanitary side and this, in the, uh, for, for sewer. Um, the person who's in charge of, uh, really who's kind of running the water utilities operations group right now um, is responsible for everything from regulatory reporting, which can be incredibly, uh, detailed and, and take up a lot of time to put together, uh, filling in, uh, sometimes, uh, quite frankly, fixing leaks, uh, deploying staff, uh, much less managing people. Um, so, uh, that, that creates, there, there's a lot of stresses that really step in on that particular person. Since you already have this model, it seems, it's, it seems like a very, uh, reasonable and also quite frankly, uh, justifiable uh, position to, to, to add to your, to your, uh, staffing in your larger. So, uh, and again, the benefits we see in particular is better direct oversight of crew work. Um, and then just more time on things like what we're calling asset management, which is also preventative maintenance activities, which are really not happening. The amount of work that's happening in the, uh, in, in water right now is, is purely reactive or mostly reactive. Uh, and then you add the administrative hall on top of that. So that is definitely a recommendation that, uh, we think isn't necessary at this moment. Go to the next slide. So right now, um, there is a full-time equipment operator position in the city, but that position is actually shared between the water utilities, what water and sewer and public works. Um, and, um, I think that it works fine when that person is available, but as you can imagine, that person is a very busy person, very popular person. As it relates to the work that, uh, they are doing, they're being asked to do. And there's an operational need, quite frankly, I think, in the water and wastewater, uh, utilities that sort of sometimes gets, uh, it just gets delayed simply because this person is not available. That can, it really impact, uh, service to customers. Uh, and, and really staff as well because they have to wait on the availability of, uh, of that equipment to be available to that person. So, um, our, our perspective is if you can add a full-time equipment operator position that's focused specifically on water and sanitary maintenance activities, that will help you both from a corrective maintenance as well as a preventative maintenance perspective. New position could be shared between the utilities, fifty percent water and fifty percent wastewater. It would speed response. And then the, the other thing that I think is really important to, to think of, if you, if you all, uh, will allow is as your water and sewer infrastructure continues to age over the next several years, this type of work will be more and more necessary. It's just the nature of the utility, uh, space right now. We're seeing in these, this in utilities all over the country. Um, even many communities spend a lot of time and energy, you know, putting, uh, designing, thinking of putting in new infrastructure. And sometimes the stuff that's already in the ground gets forgotten. And when that stuff fails, it's typically very expensive and it's very disruptive to customers. Uh, so as your infrastructure ages, you're probably gonna be, you're going to be dealing with more of these issues. And so something of this, uh, investment of this type would be, be helpful. So we mentioned earlier that, um, we believe that, um, uh, at, at the supervisory level, that the water utility is, um, is, is in need of some, of some help. But we also think that that is the case as it relates to, uh, other operator positions. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, uh, the amount of work that is happening, uh, or the type of work that is happening is, is typically reactive. Okay, something has already failed, something has broke, something is not working, a meter or whatever that happens to be about stuck, something to that effect. Um, and as a result of that, you know, people are just sort of dealing with the issue of the day, doing the best they can. Uh, so adding more staff will allow you to try to get to some of those issues before they actually occur, which typically is much less, uh, expensive because of the overtime, uh, material, other type of costs associated with those fixes. Uh, so being more proactive can help prevent a lot of those things from happening before they actually happen. The other thing is, um, one of the things we noted is a lot of staff is, uh, really burnt out. Uh, water in particular is a twenty-four seven operation. When, uh, when something breaks, you can't wait to go fix it. It's gotta be fixed. And someone is, if there's not enough people to help do that, then that can, that can really, really weigh on staff's morale. And so that, some adding more people will help with that. The other big piece of this is, I, I think you all would respect this very much. You know, water and wastewater professionals, operators are, they are highly trained, highly skilled and very highly sought after people, particularly anymore. They need to be trained as much as possible because techniques for construction or, or maintenance are changing all the time. And as well as increased safety requirements. So adding more people would allow for that as well. Next slide. So wastewater is a little bit different than water in this sense. You all, although you have six wells on the water side, you do run a full functioning wastewater treatment facility in, in sanitary. And we are recommending that, that, that's great. They do an incredible job. Your plant is in, is in excellent shape. I, I think they do, they do very well. The, the one thing that I think we noted and I, and, and we heard throughout our interviews as well as some of the data that we saw is because of the risk associated with running a treatment facility, many times that takes precedent over what's going on in the collection system. And just like the water collection or the water distribution system, that collection system ages, there are issues with it. There are everything from, you know, backups, super backups due to any number of circumstances, environmental circumstances to, or to just the failing of infrastructure. As the infrastructure ages, it continues to deteriorate. And as a result, what's happening now, because you don't have a ton of staff in place, you, you really can't get to that collection system. So we're, we're recommending that a number of positions for, in fact, operators be added to the sanitary district. This would allow staff to keep pace with the current maintenance needs in both the plant and in collections, as well as hopefully get ahead of the curve, things like coast capture TV inspection of your sewers, which you rely on contractors to do right now. You actually could probably do that in-house and you could do that cheaper. You could get a more robust jetting program or cleaning program, which does a lot of things as it relates to making the sanitary system function better. And those, those type of things right now are not necessarily happening. And the only real way to do it is to increase capacity within the staff to make that happen. Next slide. Another position, this, I think this is the final position we're going to talk about here. So, so SCADA systems are the, essentially the backbone for the operation and functioning of water and wastewater utility systems. And for, for those, for lack of a better term, those systems are probably the ones that are taking on more and more importance in the delivery of water and wastewater service as time goes on. Because there are more, there's just more technology in these systems. I, I think that's a, a simple way of putting it. And so having a fully functioning SCADA system that you understand, you know, and you maintain regularly will allow you to operate the system as efficiently as possible. Right now, there's no dedicated staff or program in maintaining the system that you have. That's all, that's all relying on contractors. So one full-time position can both maintain water and sewer SCADA networks, we believe. And I think that will address a lot of the, of the issues that we see here. So the summary of all this, this is ten new FTEs. I recognize that's a lot. But the idea is that this will ensure your sufficient supervision and capacity for preventative maintenance. It will bring Coachella up to par roughly with your peers to agency staffing levels. And you can see the positions that we've denoted here on the left of this particular table. The cost is about eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, fifty-two dollars total, using the estimated salary at the midpoint plus thirty percent for benefits. I, I think it's important to note, as it relates to our recommendations, we've recognized this is a significant add, so we understand that. So the, the tremendous management staff you all have, I think, can help phase this in as, as is necessary and really address the critical needs first as, as they sort of interpret them. But at optimal levels, this is what you would look like. And so that's, that's the, the result of the recommendation. So really quickly, I just want to go through a few operational efficiency items that I think we noted as we were doing the, the, the study. I mentioned this earlier and I think this is, this, this all ties in together with really a lot of what we talked about as it relates to staffing. So conducting preventative maintenance in accordance with best practice and start moving towards predictive maintenance. So right now, as I mentioned, most maintenance activity is reactive and there's just a lot of fighting fires. Doing something more preventatively from, in our experience, re- really is a, it's a, it's a culture shift, but it really pays dividends in the long term. And as your organi-, as your agency ages, as I mentioned, that infrastructure, th- these type of things, getting ahead as far as you can is going to be much cheaper typically speaking than if you, than you let it run to failure. And that's essentially the model that's been followed to this point. Go to the next slide Rebecca. We think that a rolling replacement budget cycle for equipment to perform preventative maintenance is, is a really good idea. Right now, essentially, the way the equipment I think is funded is it runs, it basically runs to failure and then they have to, there, you have to find new monies to, to pay back or to buy the new equipment. So setting aside some funds that you plan for replacement of items on a regular basis is, is a good idea. It can, it can manage costs. It can also make things more predictable. And as I mentioned, as the, as the infrastructure ages, and if you do add a lot of this new staff, you, you will need some new equipment to, to do so. So having those methodologies and that, that mechanism for doing this will, will benefit that greatly as it relates to staffing them. I think this one's already been talked about tonight, but I just wanted, I think we want to make sure we reiterate this. Focused compensation study of neighboring utilities with some attention to nearby municipal and specialty utility districts is really, really important because of retention. At the time of our view, there were several vacancies. And so we just want to make sure that we, we state very clearly, we agree with this. I think that it's, it's crucial for, for recruitment into the future and, and holding on to the people you have, quite frankly. Next slide. The final thing we'll talk about is our, is we see in, there will be an increased need for capital improvements in the, in the future. You have good, you have, you have some areas that are in excellent condition, others not as much. And what we see is, it's not just you, we see it all over the country, is that the, the nature of capital improvements is, the old saying in the industry is that when infrastructure, water, wastewater, infrastructure assets fail, they don't fail easy. They fail hard, which means that they fail all at once and they fail, and they're very expensive when they fail. So as a result of that, keeping, keeping abreast of those things and really increasing that investment where it's possible is, is really important. Something that could be thought of as a capital apportionment and, and a new rate structure. This is something that's pretty typical in the industry. It can be done in several different ways. But I think this is a, our recommendation is that it's paid more attention to. One thing I'll mention that's really key on the capital side is you have to have the people in place to be able to deliver the capital improvements as well. So it wasn't part of our scope, but it, it'll be really important to have qualified staff that can work for the city of Coachella to really help drive some of these capital improvements. And so that, that's also part of the, the equation when you're talking about capital improvements. That's the end of my presentation. I'll stand for questions as well as Rebecca will as well. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for this presentation. Any questions council? Thank you. I just want to comment and thank the staff because of the first four points that were made and the first draft that our staff is performing above five utilities in terms of, or working more than five, like equivalent to individuals with five utilities. It's pretty stark. It's pretty in your face, you know, in terms of how, how well our, our, our staff and how good they're performing, but how much they're performing. And so I, obviously it's very clear that we need to add staff. We need to add folks to, to alleviate some of that burden and some of that, that impact. That's my question, not so much to you, Costello, but it's more to our city manager. Is what is the idea here? How do we get these departments what they need?
The next, the next step is to do a conversation study, correct?
Well, the, the next step is to do the compensation study, but the manpower study is, is almost independent of that.
Well, I mean, the, the compensation study will give me real numbers on what we need to pay current staff and future new staff. And then I can bring an item to council after that, see what the full burden to the budget would be.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I think that's, that's good. We can look at the compensation study, but really right away, I think we need to start working on an implementation of, you know, if we can't get to the optimal, at least try to, try to strive to eighty percent or ninety percent of the optimum or whatever that is, right? And build you over time. It, it's apparent and as the growth continues to happen that the system is going to be strained, staff is going to be strained. And we're going to need the staff. So I, I mean, to me, you know, let's look at mid-year, let's look at how we can start to allocate and kind of build over time to get you what you need and, and at least set a benchmark. I mean, I, I don't know. Based off of these recommendations, ten FTEs, four for water, you know, and then, you know, others for, for sanitary, like probably, well, maybe we're at sixty percent of optimal. Maybe that's a question for Scott or for Rebecca in terms of like where, where our staff level is at, at this point.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I, I hate to offer a percentage. What I would say is you have some areas that are sort of the way I would say, it's just, you, you need to pay some attention to it, probably very, very quickly in the operations area, right? And the, the, the point being is it, it's a combination of needing more leadership and, and, and just more people to do the work. So I, I would say right now you are understaffed and the, based on what we see, that combination of, you know, some level of, of management, right? As well as, as ju-, as just folks to actually do the work. It could be a couple in sewer, a couple in water to start, right? It could, it could kind of go in that direction. It could, that's where, that's where your management team can really, I think, shape what, what you're looking to do. But I, I, I don't think it's a stretch to say you are, you are indeed understaffed. I, I just, why don't you say percentages? It's, it's tough to, to throw that out there.
So Scott, let me, let me just add something. So yeah, you're right. We're, we're doing and some, and some, and, and the portions that, that, that we're focusing on, we're doing more than, than other agencies. But because we're doing more in those particular areas, we're also not doing anything in other areas. And so one of the examples that I'll give you is, for example, because we just don't have the bodies to stretch out the bodies into all the different tasks of the operations, we, we don't, we don't really have a valve turning program, right? And so a valve turning program is typical of agencies, you know, you have to go out there, you have to turn your valves once in a while. Otherwise, the valve's turned on and it's ten years later, you want to turn it off. It, it won't budge and you'll snap it. Right? And then, and then, so you know, we don't, I'll give you, sometimes we have to go isolate certain areas and, and that's when we start realizing, you know, this valve, we need to exercise it. It adds time to the shutdown. We find out that a valve doesn't work, things like that. So, you know, we, we, we manage, we still make it work, but those are things that I think as we add more, more bodies, we'll be able to spread those bodies into new tasks that right now we're not really, we're not sure.
No, I, I, I get it. I get it. I think what I'm asking is that come mid-year, we come back with a little phasing plan, something to get you the bodies that you need and then really kind of address this issue and then, and get us to a plan over, over time. We are getting more connections, you know, we are going to get more revenue. Now, there is a, a good amount of development that's, that's still occurring. So, you know, looking at that, the balance between our budget and the revenue and depreciation and et cetera, and everything that Scott or Rebecca worked on, I, I agree with, you know, now it's really, it's about managing the budget and, and getting us to where we need. So that's, that's my recommendation. There's a budget, this isn't an item, but I'm hoping that bring something, or you can bring something to help.
We'll work on that. And we did, we did do one thing already. We did get the equipment operator. So that's, that's already been approved. So we're moving on hiring that position.
So equipment officer in terms of just having one for water and sewer.
For water and sewer and, and public works stays with the one that they have and then we get one.
It's just going to, she, she was taking it all. But she's got a lot of work to do.
She has a lot of work to do.
I'm sure she's going to do one of these studies too and be like, I'm understaffed too.
She's getting ideas on studying now.
Costello, so there's ten positions that have been identified and then one of them has been built. And as we're looking at these nine other positions, which do you think that are absolutely vital? In terms of, I know and it's hard to do because they're, obviously they're all needed, but which one would you say that are absolutely critical for you to have?
I, I would say like two, like two in water, two as a, if we were to phase it in, I'd say, you know, two in water, two in sanitation and then the, the SCADA.
I'll give you five.
I think as a, I think as a city, and I said this before, is that we need to get better at long-term, long-term planning when it comes to staffing and population growth and service growth. You know, I think that that's one area that we really haven't dived into as much as, as we should have, you know, and I know when I came on board, I was, I was asking more staffing as well because we were understaffed in certain areas or some folks were saying that they needed, you know, additional help and additional support. And I've asked this before too, Gabriel, is to do a comparison of what we're contracting out in comparison to, to what those costs would be if we provided it in-house. Because what's happening is that, you know, you have these emergencies or you have these calls. And so we're calling, you know, whoever we're contracting and they're coming in and obviously the dollars is a lot higher than if we would have someone, you know, in-house. And I know that there's benefits and all of that. And there's always been a concern about hiring more people because it's long-term and contracting out is, you know, you can obviously eliminate it at any time. But I do think that we need to take a look at what we're contracting out, how much we're contracting out and how much we would actually be saving with bringing that in-house. And I do think that we need to do a better, a better job of it. So one thing I did had asked for in the beginning, Gabriel, is to do an assessment of all the departments about what the needs are and then planning for it, short-term and long-term, so that we're better prepared. Because what we see coming in now is that we're hiring, you know, a lot of employees all up front and sometimes, you know, in the budget, we haven't really planned for it as well. And so that's a concern for me. I would like to start hiring as we, as we see that population growth even before it to start planning, because that's just what you need now. But this is not really kind of sharing what we're going to need even in the future as we continue to grow. And so that's my concern as well is that we look beyond just about what we need now, but long-term planning in addition to what we need as well. And I know I've heard from some of the employees about when they're out in the field with things being dated and their concerns behind that. Now, I can't tell you what they are because I have no clue what any of this equipment is, but you know, there's been a concern about it being dated and getting that up to where it needs to be so that they can do their job better. And so we have to take that in mind as well. And then also the aging infrastructure. So there's lots of stuff I think that we need to take a look at outside of staffing as well. And, you know, we looked at the aging infrastructure. We know we need to start planning for that. And so, you know, is, is also is what do you think we need to prioritize when it comes to some of this aging infrastructure? Because once again, we're going to have to see what we can afford now and then what we can afford as we, you know, as every year goes by. And so I would ask you as well as to identify what things are absolutely critical that you need at this moment to provide your team with the support and the tools that they need. You know, so that they're not burnt out. You know, they're, they're a bit burnt out, I think, sometimes.
Yeah, they, they, they are. It's a small crew and they're on a pretty tight on-call rotation. And, and so this, this will be helpful. And, and on the infrastructure side, you know, we don't, we don't really experience a lot of like mainline breaks. It's really more on the services. And so we've been replacing a lot of those services and a lot of the older parts of town. There's different reasons why they're, they may be, you know, having leaks. One of the things that I do want to propose at one point is to get away from right now our standard calls for like polyethylene service lines, those, no one really installs, installs those. We, you know, people install copper tubing. So that's something that we're, we're trying to change so that we lessen our, you know, our leaks. And so we do have a master plan on the sewer side that has a, a capital improvement plan. That's not necessarily tied to age of pipe, but it's more on the capacity side. And that is something that, that, that we, that we are implementing. Really, I think for me, the, the priority is, is moving to things like exercising. Is moving to things like exercising valves, um inspecting manholes, right now. We don't really have a program to inspect that, we just don't have the bodies to do it. Um right now, what what I put a an emphasis on on staff is to. Be quotas to uh jet more, you know, as I mentioned, we have about a hundred miles of sewer mainline. Those lines need to be jetted, um thank you, you guys did buy us a brand new. Backer truck that backer truck is put to use every day, it's out 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 there jaying lines and so. Uh I I we're trying to implement a a a management system where. They're documenting all the lines that are being jetted, one of the things that I that I that I'm trying to do is um. At minimum, check the entire system. Uh once uh every three years, meaning like you start from the top, you start pushing everything down and you hit every pipe like at least. Once every three years, I think that's a good standard. Um and as they're popping manholes, I tell them, you know, take a picture, put it in the system. So we can start creating like some sort of rating system of what manholes are bad, what manholes are okay, what manholes are good. And hopefully start implementing some sort of mammal replacement program. But again. There's only so much we could do and and so we will come up with a plan to.
But point question noted, I I just will um. Say to the council, we wanna support you, we we wanna uh get you where you need to be. We've been very conscious in the city about cost. Because ultimately, it's our rate payers, meaning our citizens that pay for it. But if we're at a point where we're talking staff, we're talking equipment, we're talking aging infrastructure. I did see one of the points in the presentation is a rate study and a rate increase. So I I only put that out there because uh council be ready. If that's what we wanna support, then you're also gonna have to start supporting the corresponding rate increase, which. I've been through that exercise, both water and sewer, I've seen a hundred and fifty people outside with pitchforks. Uh you know, talking about, you know, why are you raising our water rates and why are you doing X, Y, and Z? So. We try not to do those things because, you know, we try to handle things accordingly, we're seeing more growth. We're seeing a a a want by council members to really push for more staff. Then the corresponding change, right, is gonna be rate of rate increase. And so we need to get ready for it because there's also regulation associated with that.
Sure.
And we haven't done one in a while, right?
Eight years.
But but it's been eight years.
That's why you're ten people short.
So.
I mean, it's a, it's really unheard of of uh. You know, not doing a rate increase in 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 eight years and that is something that that we need to do and um.
Really quick for water and sanitation, as for the diff, is that always completely used up?
Now it can be used for infrastructure, not staffing.
No, not for for all the other stuff like the aging infrastructure, is that always used up or do you have anything in?
No, we we have, we have a, we have a pretty good uh reserve on the. On the dip for that, um typically, that's used more for. Uh for expansion of the system versus 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 repair of existing infrastructure, the rate. Uh in theory, the rate should be set to maintain the current system. And then the impact fee to expand the system.
One of the employees also mentioned the um the piping. Um which you had mentioned in the beginning, as far as us using copper. Uh and I fully support a policy, bringing that forward as well. Um they had mentions just how many services that they get because of that issue. And if it's, if that's going to decrease the services that they have to keep going now to make those repairs. Then I do support looking into a policy for new development that's gonna require them to do that type of.
Uh yeah, we we try to, it's not in our standard, uh unfortunately, our standards are a little bit outdated. Uh but but we try to capture them in a project by project in our conditions of approval, we say, hey, you're gonna be conditioned to put copper tubing. Uh but there's a lot of things that we could, you know, that we do a little bit different, I think we do it just because we're also. You know, try and try to be friendly to development, uh development, you know, copper tubing is more expensive than than the polyethylene line. Another thing is, you know, all our neighboring agencies uh only installed ducted iron pipe, we allow PVC. Right? But that's that's something that we've been doing for a long, long time, uh at least since two thousand seven. And so those are, those are things that if we would say. You know, we're just gonna condition that all water pipeline is ducted iron, we could do that, but you might have developers say, oh, you know, now you're. Now you're increasing the cost of construction, but but again, everybody else around us is doing that, so. Those are the things that we just need to balance, but.
I would also just quickly, before we wrap up, is that when it comes to programming and um you know, software. Are you up to date as well with that, or is there anything else that you also need support with when it comes to that?
We need support on the SCADA side, um uh. Having someone on the SCADA side would help us kind of keep up to date on those things, but right now the SCADA is working. Uh there's just, you know, like a lot of things, the technology changes, things can be done better. What we have is working, but it could be better.
That's right, I just want to make sure that when we're looking into this, that we're identifying. All the needs so that we're planning for it accordingly. And I don't wanna just look at staffing and not look at all the other things, and I know coming up with the money is another thing. But I do want you to, you know, share um exactly what is some of the stuff that, you know, you you need. And being, like he said, more preventive than reactive until the into the. Where it gets to the point that that program is obsolete now and you know, you we're out of, you know, we're outdated in that too. So I just ask that you, you know, when it comes to all of it, is that you share? What is it that you need and where is it that you think you're moving to?
Okay, all right, thank you.
I mean, big is what I just heard.
All right.
Age infrastructure, new software.
Well, we need to take a look.
Fifteen to twenty percent rate increases.
We need to take a look at it, we cannot not look at, we cannot be afraid of what those costs be, we do, we have to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Castelo.
All right, with that, uh we have a policy here that it's about eight o'clock, eight, ten, twenty. Um I'm gonna hold off on next items and allow the communities to address us. Are there any members in the community that would like to address the city council? Uh on any item of the uh that is not in the agenda? Uh but is within subject matter thereof, it's eight o'clock, is there anybody?
Yes, we do, we have Maria Elias.
Maria, welcome.
So today, I would like to actually um show the people my poster that I made. I may not have a presentation, um but this pretty much goes to the point. To the concerns I do have with the Coachella Valley Unified School District. And I do appreciate for the moment and for the time you actually give me to speak on this matter. So my concerns is it has to be with the Coachella Valley Unified School District. The John Kelly Elementary School, which is around the corner. And as well as uh all the special needs students. Not only for that, also for that staff from John Kelly. That was, that did not receive any repercussions for their actions towards. Not only my son who has special needs, but also other special needs students. There have been um other staff that actually work in John Kelly. Who are afraid to come forward. Who think they will be fired for retaliation. Um I was able to speak as well. To directly to the director who's in charge of special needs. Which is Mister Rob Nichols and Mister Aaron Wilson. There is another gentleman who was not able to speak to, which is Jason Goff. I did not receive any results from my son. The incident happened in February seventh of this year. I was able to do everything that was legal. Um with paperwork and through all the steps that I needed to do, which is with the Coachella Valley Unified School District. As well with the Sheriff's Department, as well with John Kelly. And as well with the hospitals that were involved and with Child Protective Services. The name for those principal, for those staff in John Kelly. Miss Tora Flores, principal. Miss Becky, school assistant for Miss Miss Burdinson. As well as the school nurse, Maria Medina. As I speak. About these people. Instead of helping, they decided to insult, blame others as well as my son. Never apologized and never got any justice. My case was closed. My son suffers mental abuse due to that incident. And others as well feel. Those who cannot speak due to language barriers, because majority of our people are farm workers. Majority of our people cannot even speak Spanish due to that language barrier. Majority of those people are Puré Pacha and speak Tarasco. This is representing all those people from North Shore to part of India. Those students who are special needs cannot always speak for themselves. Due to that language barrier as well. They cannot tell their parents on what they go through. But other staff have witnessed for themselves. And cannot do anything about it. As I speak about these people. My question is, what can you do to assure the safety of all special needs students? And my son.
Yeah, I wanna thank you first off for coming here. Um we don't handle the school district, but we can get you to the people that do. And get you to the right folks, including their superintendent, as well as the president of the uh Coachella Valley Unified School District. Uh as in terms of holding people accountable, we don't have that jurisdiction, but we can help you seek justice and find justice. And so I'm gonna ask that that we get your information and then we'll follow up. And get a meeting with the superintendent as well as the the president of school, and thank you for being here. And listening to our meeting and I hope you find what uh you're looking for in the justice that you need.
If I may continue?
You can.
Thank you. Um. I believe my other questions. Are. Those people that you say I can speak to, I have already spoken to. I've also gone to the court system for district attorney, which cannot help. Due to not having a report that the Sheriff's Department was supposed to send. No help at all. The public defenders cannot help since they don't represent those cases. The lawyers I have spoken to from all over California, because I have not given up. Cannot help due to that lack of information, which I have asked for. Many, many times, I did not get any results until I started protesting. In front of the Coachella Valley Unified School District. Whom majority of the workers right there were not even aware of the situation. So I have exhausted all my resources, all the legal things that I can do. And my son was barely able to change schools like a week ago. This was needed to be done since February. What can you continue to at least do for those students? For those parents who cannot speak, not only for my son. It is part of Coachella, it's in the name, Coachella Valley Unified School District. I believe maybe you can do more for those. Today I'm advocating for all of the people who come from my heritage. And for all those students, they may not be my children, but I. Take care of them, I want to take care of them like my children, like my son. Who has special needs, it has no fault. And has no justice.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Hector Prieto.
Hector. Welcome.
Hello, how you doing?
Very well.
Um I'm here cuz I had an incident yesterday with the court enforcement. I reached out to city manager, left them uh two messages, one on the cell phone and one on his um. Office, I reached out to Stephanie, which actually she replied back, thank you for that. And um she said she was gonna have somebody contacting me. It's basically of a a permit issue, I need a permit to build a a metal shade structure for my vehicles. We live in the desert, I take pride in my house. As well as I'm pretty sure you guys own houses, you know, you wanna upgrade them in the way you can. I wanna do things the right way, I see houses in Coachella that have the same thing, pay my taxes. I wanna do things right, um the guy that went out there, court enforcement guy. Uh no, very useful, very rude. No, no, all he kept saying is show up to city council, that's all he kept saying. Um he brought somebody else out, same thing. Um guy said that he can't uh he can't have anything, matter of fact, he doesn't have time to give me any information, he has a lot of work to do here at the office. To be honest, as a taxpayer for the city, I mean, I think uh he should provide a little more information, be a little more professional. You know, uh I work myself, I deal with the public too, and I don't treat others like that either. So, you know, respectfully, if you guys can help me get that permit. To build my shade structure in front of my house, I wanna do it the right way, cuz I know that there's a lot of people that don't have with with permits.
Thank you, Hector, for being here, we'll help you and there's a gentleman right there, he's wearing a gray shirt, his name's Gabriel, get his car and he'll help you.
Okay.
Then uh I'll ask our city manager as well to debrief with you about customer service and. How we can provide a better customer service to you, it may be, I'll be honest, that uh it may be that we may need to address this from a policy consideration. Uh because you're not the first one uh that has been cited on uh on. Uh shade structures, and that's something we've talked about uh because you're absolutely right, it is hot, if people wanna preserve their cars and. You know, the sun beats up on your car and you're painted everything else and you want the shade and. Sometimes you wanna be able to like just be outside and under the shade.
Yeah, hang out or you know, I mean, I have my my mother-in-law, you know, she lives with us. You know, she likes to go out there with her car sometime while she, you know, with my with her grandkids, my kids.
A little coffee and just.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I I see there there's no problem with that, I just need to help, I wanna do things the right way.
Oh, well, thank you for being here, we'll we'll get you some information and we'll, if 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 uh we need to consider a policy change, we will, cuz. I think it's time to consider that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Gabriel, can you um can you send us an email, I I wanna understand why they weren't able to assist you? And if it it is a policy issue that gets been identified, I I do wanna bit background.
Okay.
As to as to what occurred and then what you were asking, what they can help out with and then. You know, I I just wanna, I wanna understand it.
Okay, I got I got video footage of it from my uh my room, my camera. Of the incident, so I mean, I'm I'm more willing to provide you with that.
Yeah, we'll give it to our city manager and we'll we'll assess.
Okay.
We go over our customer service and. The council wants to be helpful and try to help people out, we're not trying to be punitive and hurt people.
Yeah, you know, it's understandable, like I told him, you know, I I I'm asking you for the answer and he's like, well, I have time to give you that, so. You know, I have a lot of work to do at the at the office, I mean, okay, so. That's why I'm here.
And I can tell by the way you're talking to us too, that it was all respect, so.
Yeah, no, of course, you know, I'm like I said, I work with the public, I'm very respectful, I know how to treat others, cuz I wanna be treated the same way. You know, so therefore, I mean, I didn't come, I am not disrespectful at all. You know, I just have some simple questions, you know, maybe he's frustrated, I get it, people, you know, get frustrated with their jobs, but at the same time, you need to be professional.
Absolutely.
You know.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate that and.
Thank you.
I'll let him know and say, hey, he showed up, told him to come here, he showed up.
Yeah, I did, I did, I'm a man of my word, man. Yeah, I did. I did. I'm a man of my word, man.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more speaker phones for anyone that is here currently. If there is anyone here that would like to speak, please let us know. If not, I do see someone on Zoom.
We're gonna take a five-minute rest and break after that. And anybody online?
Yes, we have a few online.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Marla, sorry, my glasses are obviously not working.
Bueno?
Marla, uh, si te escuchamos.
Si me escuchan, gracias. Es este, eh, ah, esto es para lo agendado o lo no han agendado? Lo que, ah, y tengo, ah, mi tres minutos? Oh, gracias. Ah, mire, yo primeramente les quiero decir que. Ahm, pues yo no, no, ahm, yo no tengo mucha educación, verdad? Yo. Eh, yo nada más llegué a la primaria y discúlpenme si, si no me oigo como muy, muy educada. Gracias. Es que mire, yo, y si me pongo a chillar, pues ay también, perdónme, pero yo tengo cinco hijos. Y yo les quiero agradecer a todos ustedes porque cuando vino el, el, el este de Hillary, el. Pues yo tenía mucho miedo con mis niños y ustedes me ayudaron muchísimo, los empleados de aquí de todo de la ciudad de Coachella. Me ayudaron muchísimo y, y aunque teníamos miedo, nos dieron. Pues de verdad que mucho y yo les he querido ir a decir en persona, pero pues no puedo porque no tengo a nadie que me cuiden mis chiquillos y pues les tengo que dar cenar, ¿verdad? Y pues también mi viejo pues toda la noche, hasta, hasta, hasta trabaje, trabaje. Pero y yo siempre los trato de escuchar porque me da orgullo. Tengo mucho orgullo. Tengo más de veinte años. Viviendo aquí en la ciudad de Coachella y me daba mucho, mucho orgullo y pues, pues de veras muchas gracias a todos. Ahm, una cosa nomás, como les digo, yo no estoy muy educada, pero la vez pasada hubo la junta y. Y yo siento como que pues, disculpe que se lo diga a, a la señorita Delgado, pero ay es que a veces. A usted puede hacer un poquito negativa y pues, se me hace como de tan bonito que, que pasó todo y cómo nos ayudamos. Nomás hay que tener cuidado con, pues con nuestras palabras, ¿verdad? Porque. Porque yo, se me hizo todo muy, muy bonito y yo les quería llamar por todas las bolsas de arena que me, que nos dieron y. Y para lo que ustedes ocupen, lo que ustedes quieran. Ahm, yo soy una cochelana orgullosa, cien por ciento. Y, y yo aquí voy a estar para mucho rato y yo le dije a mis amigas que llamaran porque, porque lo que hizo la ciudad. Pues estamos tan orgullosos y pues de veras que muchas gracias nomás. Más positivismo, por favor, más positivismo. Ahm, yo le tengo mucho respeto a usted, al mayor, porque uy, usted habla tan bonito que híjole. Yo quisiera hablar como usted. Usted sabe hablar muy, muy bonito. Yo un día voy a hablar como usted. Bueno, ya es todo porque no los quiero aburrir. Muchas, muchas gracias.
Se ha hecho muy bien educada. No digan que no es educada. Se ha hecho muy bien educada.
Gracias, gracias.
So, gracias. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Do we have another hand raised?
We have two Jesus.
Okay, Jesús Díaz.
Jesús, uh, welcome.
Hi, yes, um, yeah, I'm calling on behalf of my dad, um, Jesús Díaz Senior. He just wanted to uh, give. You know, just some of his personal input and I guess just mine as well. Um, I just wanna start off by saying thank you to the city council for uh, giving the residents this opportunity to voice themselves. You know, on a platform, I think it's drastically beneficial for the public to be able to give their general individual insight on how they feel their city is ran. Um, I also wanna give credit to uh, Mayor Hernandez, uh, council member Galardza, and in a short time to council member Dr. Figueroa. And council member Vigen, um, for all the positive things that have happened and are happening in our great city. Um, your uh, vision of new business, rehabbing old ones and initiating projects, programs. And establishing new ones, um, and just new networks and collaborating with uh, other agencies and promoting jobs is just visible. Um, I have seen how you've worked with city employees to fulfill uh, Coachella of Tomorrow and your efforts are all just greatly appreciated. Um, just on the side, um, my dad and I would just wanna know to council member Delgado, um. You know, just what have you brought to the city individually? Cause I guess we just feel like, you know, it's just not as evident. I just wanna know, you know, what projects are you individually working on? Cause we just, we're not really seeing the efforts in the same way. Um, but anyhow, uh, just uh, thank you to everyone and all the city employees. Uh, I do have some remarks regarding the last flood. Um, I just wanna say, I understand there was a lot of negativity spread about that situation, but during the last flood. You know, I was able to get the sandbags. Um, we needed it for the house. I called the city for information. I looked on social media for updates. And it was all very helpful. Um, it showed and shows that our city, we got it together. And uh, our retention basin was cleared promptly. Streets were drivable. Trees were picked up, you know, it wasn't too damaging and. Um, I, I can't, I just feel unfortunately, we can't say the same about uh, neighboring cities, you know, like Cathedral City, Palm Springs, Indio. You know, Desert Out Springs, you know, I just, like, I didn't see the, you know, the same. Uh, organization that we had present in our city, you know, I just think that we truly rocked. We did a great job and I just wanna say thank you to city fishes for. You know, making that possible and making that happen. Um, or you know, that, that was awesome. So we appreciate that and you know, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker.
Thank you, Jesús. Really quick, um, Jesús, if you would provide your information, I, I would love to. Have that conversation. It's a legitimate question and concern and I would love to have that conversation if you're available.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll try to get that for you and my dad right now. Uh, we're, we're both driving right now, but when we get home, we can get that to you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is M. Delgado. M. Delgado, if you can just unmute yourself.
Hello? Oh, uh, um, I wanna say, uh, thank you for, for uh, for, for, uh, for today. Um, as a Coachella resident, I just wanna say thank you to the city for everything you do. Uh, it shows uh, during the last storm, not only in the last storm, but just in, in general. Every time I'm able to, uh, you know, the streets, every, I see everybody working together. Uh, I see how the city worker, state, uh. Teamwork. Uh, thank you to Mayor Hernandez, council member Galardza, council member. Uh, Figueroa, council member Vigen, thank you. Um, and I just wanna say that in the last storm, I think my, my friend told me to. Uh, that she was gonna call and I said, I, I feel like I need to call to, to say thank you. Um, you know, I didn't like the way, you know, I think negativity is, is nowhere here. We need to work together when something happens. So that was not, that was not a good look. Um, I'm a Delgado. I voted for you and so I just hope that, you know, that, that changes work together. I know we can have. Difference opinion, but there's ways to do things. So, um, anyways, I just wanna say, I don't, I didn't like it. I, but I appreciate everything else. That you do for, for the city, for uh, for the residents and um. I just wanna see what new, new businesses. I, I wanna open a business too, so I wanna, I am so happy to be able to, to work together. Um, to get my permit, so I will be uh, hopefully in the near future. So, uh, I wanna say thank you to. To city council and to uh, and to all the employees, uh, to everyone, directors, the uh. The uh, the what, the employee, the uh, who, the other manager, everybody for helping me, for uh, doing everything. Um, just, uh, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado, um, for your comments and there's been quite a few comments towards me and I will say that I will work on it. I'm very good with taking criticism and so I will do my best moving forward. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Angelina Calderon.
Angelina, bienvenida.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hi, um, I don't wanna take up too much of your time. Um, I just, I wanna say. Well, good evening and, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm, I'm actually a college student. I'm studying um, city management and I. I've been looking at the Coachella Valley and I'm from here. My family's from here and I just love the studying that I've been doing. My third year in college right now. Um, and so it's really nice just to see the community working together. My, my speaking is on, on behalf of. Um, Hurricane Hillary and just everything that you all did and I just wanna say. Um, I wanna say thank you to you, mayor, and I wanna say thank you to the, to the council members as well. Um, I, it's a conversation that I was having with my family about just everything that the city was doing to help with community members. I love. I was very involved in community service in high school and in college and so when I see the community working together. Um, it honestly touches my heart. I, I had a rough past growing up in the Coachella Valley and my, you know, parents did as well. Um, and so I know that a lot of people look at. Coachella and maybe not a lot of good things come to mind, but I, I can honestly say that I'm very happy with the way that things turned out. I wanna thank you. Um. I wanna thank you for, for your service and. Um, council member, member Delgado, I know that, you know, you just said that, that. You're used to taking criticism or you take criticism very well and I do appreciate that. I appreciate you saying that. I know that. You might be getting some of that criticism today and I just hope that, um, sometimes we can receive that and I, I receive that as a lot as a. As a college student, as someone who came from the Coachella Valley, I, I understand that, but I hope that, you know, you can take some of that and just understand. That that comes from a place of wanting to get better as a city. Um, so just understanding that. You know, those negative comments and those attacks on those city workers. We just have to understand that there are consequences for those things and we, we never want to be a city that attacks the workers. One, one another, especially when we don't know that, what the other people are doing. So, um. This goes on, on behalf of our management team and just the workers themselves and just providing that support. If we see that the support is there for the families, that's really what we should look at. And reflect on and just be happy about that and proud of that. But overall, I just wanna say. Thank you and um, thank you for allowing me to look at my city and, and just be proud of, of all the things that we can do to work together as a community and I, I hope we can keep. Working towards those goals. So, thank you.
So, I think that's birthed in a confusion. Maybe it's towards my comments that I made during the last time. So my comments were only towards the city manager because he was on vacation. It was never with any employees. I praised him over and over, so I just want everyone to understand where my comments were and. I was displeased with the vacation, but that is the extent of it.
I, you can address it in your city council comments. Next, next copper, uh, speaker.
From where I'm sitting, I don't see any more hands raised. Do you?
Uh, I don't see any as well. I, we have, no, there's, there's no more.
No more.
With that, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Oh, actually Brad, you're here. Brad, you made it just in time. Mr. Anderson, the floor is yours.
Okay, perfect. So if you could just state your name, so.
Uh, thank you, Brad Anderson.
You have impeccable timing.
Oh, I just got out of the uh, community meeting in Mecca. Uh, so I rushed down here. Uh, I don't know if the mic's on or not, but uh, I just wanted to congratulate the city on the uh. I'm, I'm late in the news cycle and I noticed that you uh, uh, decided not to go with the uh, license plate readers. And I think that's a very smart move. I know everybody's doing it. That's not a reason to do something. So, and I know the city runs Mars. I think you rest, uh, you uh, mentioned that or somebody did. As an example, or, or some kind of a comment towards city and, and I can tell you, they didn't do anything correct there to do that. And they're kinda, not gonna threaten to sue anybody, but they're probably looking at litigation because of it. But uh, I just, I just wanted to thank you. That's a smart move. Thank you.
Brad, you're up and down this county. Thank you for being here. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute break, cause. Communication, Matt Clerk, any ready communication?
There are none.
Uh, we'll move on to the consent calendar. It's recommended that the consent items be acted upon simultaneously unless separate actions are. Discussion is requested by city council. What are the wishes of the city council? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna pull item fifteen for a quick. I just have a few questions.
Sure. Do you wanna have a small presentation, item number fifteen? This is a professional service agreement. Where's Andrew? He was here. Rather than to the. Andrew, your roundabout is gonna get eliminated if you do not get up here. Been advocating for roundabouts.
I was trying to picture, but. Yeah, the 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 street was widened.
Why, yeah.
Yeah, and there was already race issues there with uh.
The Nats during the racing.
Yeah, there's been even before.
Well, we had a, we had the community meeting there too, the parts. Ideas like what are we?
This is on fifty-three.
Oh, my goodness.
And.
I mean, I can, I can answer the question. I I got the proposal. Uh, the the that item is for to increase the. To install a median.
Uh huh.
Speed bumps and roundabout in the intersection for the top lot park.
Hmm.
To reduce speed and safety for the for the hours that we had at the community.
Uh huh.
And that was the price of the generic behind that. So we want to bring into council and incorporate into the top lot so they both get control of the same thing.
Thank you. I I have a little question. It's not towards that. I already know what it is. Just some questions about the. Is he on his way?
Oh.
Is. Listen, okay, while while we wait for him, I'm just gonna go ahead and have a quick conversation about consent item number eighteen.
You're holding that one too?
Yes. Lisandro, while we wait for Andrew, you wanna?
Actually, maybe Gabriel. Gabriel, do you wanna address item number eighteen? This is a professional service agreement with Willden Interwest for these Inc.
It's really, it's really quick. So I know that that, you know, you guys wanna um. Possibly contract this company. And so my question is that Gabriel, do you think that you need? Like additional help to do the plan checks? Are are they that behind or?
No, we we've had PlanTech Services um or. We we we've always had a contract for PlanTech Services. So most of these get sent out to Willdan currently. Um, that contract has expired. Like, it's been over a year since that's expired. So this is to get uh a new new contractors. Uh, to be able to do that plan check.
And that's that's just our usual practice. That's what we do.
Yeah, we've always sent it out to Willdan. Um, I know what Lisandro's uh tried to do. Is have more of those plan checks take place in-house. So we have actually had a lot of savings since bringing in the the building official. Lisandro's also on now, so if you have any more questions.
And the reason I I wanted to talk to Lisandro, well. Questions for him is because he's done a really good job since he's come on board about identifying things that he wants to improve on. And so I just wanted to make sure that. You know, we're providing the support in terms of, you know, you guys contracting these services and whether it's, you know, um. Uh, our employee or building official or building inspector that normally does the plan checks.
Hmm.
So.
Yeah, uh Lisandro, you wanna speak to that that question?
Yes, thank you, Council for for the time um and your consideration on this item. Um, we we are uh making every effort to try to keep up with the development in the city. Um, the majority of the plan check is done in-house uh that allows us to. Provide better customer service, turn around the the applications in a timely manner. Um. This this professional service agreement is gonna be for uh plan checking and also uh support of uh building inspectors when. When we need them, um whether it's be vacation. Uh, if anybody is um not able to perform their full duties and we can uh. We can uh work with these consultants to to assist us through those times. Um, the reason we're we're going with three is to be able to. Uh. Provide uh kind of spread out that work between the three, um make sure that we're getting good customer service back from. From these companies and that we're providing that service to the residents. And so we'll be able to identify who who does a better job. We did go through scoring uh process with them. Uh, but we also want to make sure that when they're on board, uh we're able to. Identify who uh does the better work and maybe one of them may not be able to perform as well as the others. So. That's why we're looking at three contracts uh for this item.
Okay, thank you, Lisandro.
And then Andrew, you are here. Uh. Question on item fourteen. Or fifteen, I'm sorry.
For for the roundabout, Andrew, it's more of. Have we identified other spots in the city that may need a roundabout as well in terms of public safety or? Um, there's too much traffic, because I can identify like. Sesaf Chavez and then also like Corum Mountain where we have the kiddles crossing the street. You know, quite frequently, and I know those have been two areas that parents have really uh spoken about. And so is there other areas that we're looking at to bring roundabouts?
Um. I mean, there's lots of areas in the city that I think could benefit from roundabouts. I'm a large proponent of roundabouts in general. Um, they work as fantastic traffic calming measures. Uh, when you have a stop sign um on a very white street. You still have a tendency, a lot of citizens will just run the stop sign. Um, and there's a um. A sense of safety that might not be there if people have a tendency to run stop signs. A roundabout is a a forced traffic slowing matter, because um. You have to go slow through that intersection um with that feature there. Um, it also gives an opportunity to have kind of intentional beauty and bring kind of art or landscaping into the roundabouts as well. Um, so they both enhance the community from a safety aspect and from a visual aspect. Um, but. Any locations where city council would be in support of roundabout, um I would be. In supportive uh doing additional studies or traffic impact and having designed features forward. Uh, I would say on item fourteen, this is just to design a roundabout, so we're hiring an engineer to look at the right away. And make sure that would actually fit there. Um, so particularly being adjacent to a. A park where we're expecting a lot of people to be parking their cars, getting it out with their kids. Having that traffic feature that forces people to slow down through that intersection. Uh, because Avenue fifty-three is relatively wide. And we think would benefit there. Uh, but any other areas I definitely recommend. Um, if the community or council has any areas they would like us to look at for additional roundabouts.
Yeah.
We'd be in support of that and. Um, and it would be uh bringing those back to you for.
Yeah, I I think there is some other area that we can look into. I think this is a perfect spot and I think it needs to go there. But I do wanna just maybe look at some other areas where we have those traffic concerns. Uh, where we have, you know, cars that are speeding. It's always been a serious issue in the city of Coachella. But just like this area, it's more concerns where we have a lot of students and kiddles crossing the streets and parents having a hard time there. And so I can um send you some some of those locations, but if you know of any or if council knows of any other areas that. We can also address and then kind of prioritize them as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
And and then the other one, in our ATP grant that we'd recently presented, uh we had. A roundabout at Tyler and Grapefruit as well, which I think is a a great location for one as well.
Yeah.
And Seser Chavez right in front of K and Z. It's a big one.
Yeah.
Food, the Taco Mar right in there, the big one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh with that, there's there a motion?
Yeah.
There's a motion.
Second.
Second. Uh. All those in favor signify by saying I.
I.
I I will be abstaining on item number fourteen. Any opposition? Being on motion carries. We'll move on now to. Uh, new business calendar, item number twenty-two. This is sponsorship, the Run with Those Muertos. Um. What is that?
Council, this item is a recurring event uh for our city. Um, the item is before you um to both. Approve the beer garden um for the event and also to approve the sponsorship request. It's the same sponsorship request that was received last year from. The event applicant and the event applicant is here to present on this item. So I'd like to introduce uh T-Zoc and Brianna Dastan representing Eventscape for the event.
Thank you.
Presentation. Presentation.
Yeah.
We'll start with last year and then come to this year.
Motion approved.
Let him hide and then talk.
And the barn's pretty good. Thanks.
Oh.
Pretty neat.
Yeah.
Uh, so uh, thank you very much, Mayor Council, for your time. Uh, so wanted to start with that, just to kind of. Look back a little bit at what it is that we're talking about, you know, um. We're not uh able to show what's going to happen on November fourth just yet, um but wanted to kind of flashback uh with that to start. Um. I uh just kind of briefly, you know, this is our our tenth year. Um, you know, this would not be possible if it wasn't for council support, support of staff. Um, that have been supported from day one. Um. The first beer garden was in an alley right behind us, uh right, which is what's now the library. Um, it's kind of cool that. It's moved around to different locations and it's now back to where it originally was, but obviously. With a beautiful structure, you know, with what's going on on Sixth Street and and the surrounding areas is just obviously incredibly beautiful. So. I'm grateful, happy. Uh, Brienne and I, our team, worked year round to uh. Bring this to the city of Coachella. This is an event that was born in the city of Coachella. Uh, we're proud to be able to do this, and so we're looking forward to uh. Uh, November fourth. So um, with that, I'll just kind of jump into a little bit of. New stuff, some new stuff, and then we'll go into uh just kind of the rest of the show.
Just kind of the rest of the show. So uh first, um we started a tradition of having a featured artist. Um and uh once COVID started, it kind of became a little difficult, so we went in-house to. Do our artwork for the the poster and for the T-shirt. So grateful to be able to uh bring back that tradition of having a featured artist. Um uh Sofia Enriquez is from the Coachella Valley. Um she had a mural up here. Uh on Sesaf Chavez, um you know, for many years, so lucky to be able to bring her back. I'm just going to read. A couple sentences about her so that you can kind of get the gist of why we thought it was important to bring her here. Uh it says Enriquez's work investigates her intercultural identity. Through the use of vibrant distinct symbolism, create an autobiographical legend that weaves themes of Mexican Catholic. Iconography, indigenous homage, Spanish text, modern pop culture references, and feminine strength. Says this unique style has garnered her collaborations with the Coachella and and stagecoach music festivals. A custom limited uh Dicky's collection and a solo exhibition at the Hawaii State Art Museum. As well as several mural projects throughout Southern California. Um you know, when we kind of started this, it was really about the. Not only to bring arts and culture and 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 health and wellness, more like the uh. To the East Valley, um because obviously there's a lot of origin cultures already happening, um but we wanted to be able to highlight. What actually happened here in Coachella. There's a lot of talent here in the area and the Coachella Valley as a whole. So when we bring local artists, um you know, we want to be able to. Give them the the stage to be able to show what they're what they're doing and oftentimes it's better than anywhere you can find, so just an example of that. Um another kind of pre-pand- uh it was a. Pandemic kind of stopped us from being able to have these these workouts. It's something that we had um a previous. So basically, uh we work with different organizations to create free programming. Um you know, it's it's basically. Come out, join us um to be able to uh to to run and get ready for the the five K, right? So it's. Uh trying to eliminate that be just a one night thing, uh trying to kind of establish a custom of fitness. Um and and that you have to kind of start by doing it multiple times, not just on one night. So. Uh we're partnering with the We Do Hard Things, which is a Mark Pyon, which is a Lululemon ambassador, so that schedule will come out shortly. Uh one thing that we had a couple years ago that now uh we're able to do again as we partnered with NBC Palm Springs. Um and uh Intervision, so basically at six o'clock, the start of the run. Uh that's when their broadcast begins, so they'll be able to go live. To Sixth Street when the gun goes off. Um that's what happened a couple years ago, uh so we're grateful to be able to bring that back as well. Um a back to stuff that we are just going to continue to do and and grow upon procession. We started a few years ago. Uh so working with ACES and just a bunch of local organizations uh to be able to come out and. Um you know, this is like, this is what you see in Mexico when you have the Els Marcos celebrations, uh so we want as much as possible. Have that uh unique uh a connection uh to the holiday. The race route is uh the same as we've had now three years. Um people seem to really like it, so we're going to hold on to it. Um added benefit this year is now you have the Aldi on the uh north end of the course, which kind of was a really dark kind of patch. Uh so now that's hopefully uh a little more lit up. Yeah, it looks nice out there now. Um car show, so. A lot of people don't even know that unless you're actually running the five K, they don't know that there's a car show out there. Um we've had over a hundred cars. Uh there's like a thousand people just out there for the car show. Um so we're doing our best to kind of try and. Close the gap a little bit. Um so that's something we'll continue to work on. Uh maybe kind of bringing the cars a little bit further down uh the street so that you don't have to walk as far to get out there. Uh but obviously, we partnered with the Steela Wayado uh from here in the city of Coachella. Uh award ceremony, uh this is, you know, stuff that people really love. Uh the ones on the left, uh. Those are made for with the from artisans in Michoacan. Uh so those go to the uh procession winners. Um the car show winners, the overall individual runners, um and the uh the team winners. And then Lululemon is going to outfit uh our runners as well that win. Uh so you know. That's a pretty good.
You have participation trophy?
Uh we do not have participation trophies. Uh it it's, it it is something that comes up. Honestly, people are like, you know, hey, I finished, I should get to, I should get like something. A lot of times people do that. Um we are trying, we try to be very. If you kind of compare the cost of what it is to do our five K compared to just. People that have five Ks, it's like in in the morning in the park, they have no entertainment or nothing, where you're cheaper than there. Um but they get medals since people kind of get.
Well, I I.
Mayor, you brought it up, so. If you'd like to sponsor it, you know, we're 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 happy to.
I I especially like the dry fit. It's a, I mean, I'm just signing up, like, that's my workout gear.
It's fun.
So.
I was kidding. Yeah, yeah, but I like I like the graphic gear that we get while we're out. It's nice.
So the so the texture it is, all right, cool. Um so here's the uh site map, again, um the the same uh setup as we we've had uh the last couple years here.
Cool.
Um procession, same route, all that stuff.
Nice.
Uh scheduled event, you know, we'll get started at four and we'll have live entertainment up until midnight. Or until people, you know, pull the plug on us, but that's. That's it, and it just. Um any questions, like I said, we're, you know, kind of writing right before we.
Just to.
Start buttoning up some stuff.
Just a comment, um. I was here ten years ago when it first got started. And then uh before that, too, working with Raises and we used to do a lot of different events. Uh at the church on uh on Second Street and. You know, you start to think about like events that they create a sense of identity with the community. And I'm and I'm thinking like, this is one of them, and it's like, well, Coachella would be without the Els Marcos now. And and people know, like, hey, you want to have a good deal of those much of those experience, come to Coachella. And like, it's 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 ours, it's unique. I think we can, I think we need to do everything to build this and enhance it. I'd love to see it, you know, a little bit longer, you know, kind of. And then kind of get into the, I think we have an opportunity to kind of expand the altars too, you know, like. Whatever we can do from like, you know, giving our grants. I will say this, that um. The County of Riverside at the uh uh you know, the Day Festival now, they're going to start. They're going to do like a Halloween, but then they're going to do a deal of those kind of event too. So they're, they've obviously recognized. And you know, the significance of the Els Muertos and and I think it's cool, but we obviously have. You know, a lot more of a tradition and and longer time doing the the those multiples. And so we need to um. We need to continue to embrace this event. It's just created a huge sense of identity, no different than, as he says, this September, which we're going to have. Uh in a few days. Um. You know, so so I I I think from that standpoint, like, this this event's becoming a very Coachella. Identity of it, you know, so it's it's cool and thank you guys for staying committed to it. I know it's a lot of work. You know, I know, I know it puts a lot of stress on 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 the couple here, you know, and uh. And all your employees and staff too, you know, I mean, but I but on on this side, it's it's pretty cool that, and we got to ten years. So it's it's nice.
Uh again, uh I think uh council staff is, you know, awesome to work with, you know, we've kind of. Been able to kind of get our routine going and uh so it makes things seamless. It's a. We're all on the same team, right? We're trying to just make things better and make it smoother and um I think that's kind of. Apparent with the outcome of the event. People come, they're happy, you know, they're in a celebratory mood and. That's at the end of the day, what we're trying to try to gain partnerships, we're trying to, you know, gain collaborations. Uh this has really grown organically. Um to your point, there have been other places that have popped up with night runs for the Ellos Marcos. Based on the success that we've had, you know, I see in kind of different cities. Um it is, this is unique to the city, the way that we've actually been able to put it together. Uh with the combination of all the different elements.
We also have some good entertainment too, so any sneak peek on who's coming or?
Not yet.
Hey, yeah, we got proof of some money first.
Um first, uh last year, we, this is how much we sponsored, this amount.
You answered my question on the itemization of the money, so it goes to like the the sponsorships and stuff like that, just just my question.
Yeah, yeah, so um anticipating a question like that, we kind of just. Ran a few kind of uh reports to stuff.
Yeah.
Um we pay out uh like fifty different vendors, as an example, uh over thirty individuals that work on this event. Um so it's it's a very, again, we work on this year long. Um you know. The majority of the funds come from sponsorship. We would not be able to do this if it wasn't for the city giving us money because. Uh this is a free event, right? As an event producer, um there's no way that we could ever put together. Something this big for six, seven thousand people that's free, right? If you do the numbers on how much it, you know, brings in for people that are paying to. To run, it's like ten, twelve thousand dollars, right? So you kind of start piecing together what it is. When you're including staging and sound and entertainment and like, you know, insurance and permitting. And just staffing and power and like, it just. Goes up and up and up and up and 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 the value that we've seen is like about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? Um. We feel like we kind of as an organization, as a small business, match what the city gives in terms of effort, time. Um you know, we, you know, staff, that's stuff that we don't recover. Um you know, that's that's out of pocket for us, but it's something that. We feel committed to, we love doing it, our team loves doing it. Um so uh yeah, we'd love to be able to. Other cities have bigger kind of corporate sponsors that come in to offset costs. Um we've not been able to do that just yet uh here uh with this event, and it's not without us trying, not trying, right? We're we. We'd love to be able to pull in that big sponsor, the Bayata Market, they're like, you know, they give the ten, twenty, you know, thirty thousand dollars, so we just. Haven't been able to do it. Um you know, that's that's something that would allow us to take another step. Um in in in, you know, making this event even better.
The other side is that the production value, it's not cheap. I mean, it's nice. I mean, I I I've seen so many photos and people and and it actually creates a. Just very nice, like I I and you know, people enjoy it, the altars, the decorations, the. The different landscape that make the event, you know, happen, and it's pretty cool, like, it's nice, it's nice.
It's a, it's a, the the partnership with ISIS to us is just amazing because. The art that they bring out and, you know, that is just absolutely amazing. It adds to, you know, it lifts everything up. And then obviously, we're an event production company, so like how things look visually, um you know, just how you walk through spaces, uh being able to take pictures and. All those things that uh we kind of bring from other events. Um you know, that that's something that's important and it elevates. What, you know, the value of the event is. Um so uh you know, we'll we'll continue to do that.
You got Baby Joe over there too, doing the lowrider, so. That's what it is, all right.
Baby Joe won a trophy last year.
Second please. All right, there's an item in front of us. Is there a motion, any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
There's second.
I'll second.
We need a roll call.
Councilmember Tigaro.
Aye.
Councilmember Virgen.
Aye.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Galarza.
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez.
I move on to item number twenty-three. This is a prove amendment number one. Prevented landscape to allow for repairs of landscape improvements at Rancho Las Juarez Park. Increasing compensation in agreement by an additional hundred and fifty thousand. Let's see what happened.
Hey, you covered it pretty extensively last time. Is there anything else from what you covered the last meeting?
No, nothing more extensive than that. This item will um help the erosion repairs and really um all the irrigation that's been damaged as a result of all the trees we lost.
Yeah.
In that park, so that's what this is addressing. We will be open again after Sunday, so at this location.
Uh and I'll second, but just, what are you going to replace the trees with? We're going from a museum, Follow Verde to what?
Um we're probably going to be adding more tipus, tipuanas, so that's the existing tree that is in a lot of the turf area already at the park, so we're looking to add those.
Created a nice like over there where everybody kicks it right there.
Yes.
Okay, it's a nice tree.
That tree has done well at that park.
Um just a question, uh I've been walking a lot of the parks here and seeing a lot of uh. Shade damage, like the like the the shade canopies, the cart, the.
We have, it's it's um it's material, the sails. Um so that wasn't my original estimate, that's not included in this price, we're working on that as well. Um the ones at Les Fotas that were damaged have been replaced. Um in total, I want to say that was um a six foot. Six-figure di- number as well in in price, so I will bring those um back in the future meeting. I have a couple. Um Bagduma Park, I have one at Shady Lane, I have a couple at Dateline, so in total, um each one runs around eight thousand dollars. So um it's it's around two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, in total in shape.
And they'll install the company?
Yes, because it has to be because of the way that, um if you don't purchase them exact right size, they. So i- it is proprietary um to the um the structure that it goes with.
Okay, that that's important.
Just for Sunday, are these the ones where the damages, is it going to be blocked off, people don't?
It's all repaired.
It's all repaired, okay.
Everything will be repaired by the seventeen. This allows us to continue to move things forward and so that we don't lose more material also. So um because everything along that north side has no irrigation, I mean, uh the trees pulled everything off, so.
Right, so for the trees that were knocked down, are we replanting them with the same type of trees?
No, we're going to be going to a Tipuana, which is another tree that's already at the park. Um but it will be replaced with a different tree because Palo Verde is especially that location have not held well.
I agree.
Um but um we will, you will not see trees being. Replaced before the Grito, obviously, we'll be doing that during our fall planting, which will be in October.
There's a time for it, that that's worth coming into. Okay, uh um there's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, any abstentions, any knows, seen that motion carries. We'll move on now to. Uh item number twenty-four, this is provide staff direction for the hometown heroes. I think we should do it like we did it last year, open it up to the public.
Sure.
Uh give them a couple of weeks and then we'll go from there. And then at that time, the council can uh. Opine as well and introduce a couple of folks. Uh I do, I would like to try to keep it to like five, I don't know that we want to do like. Ten.
I think in the past couple of years, we have done five, uh each member of the council, I think, is kind of the approach that mayor that you guys have taken. Um it's been between two and five in the last six years that we usually do annually.
Yeah, but I I I think allowing the public to participate like.
Then we bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number twenty-five. Gabrielle, or is this Selena? This is a adopt resolution twenty-three dash sixty-one, authorizing the city manager to submit an application. To the Strategic Council for the Community Resiliency Center Implementation Program. Selena.
All right, good evening, uh honorable mayor and council members, Selena Jimenez, Economic Development Director. Uh so the item before you is a very exciting item for the city. It is about our community resilient center uh. A project proposal and it's uh it's a grant funding opportunity offered by the Strategic Growth Council, the same people that are. Uh spearheading T C C. So this one for short is called the Community Resilient Center or C R C. So about the Community Resilient Center Funding Opportunity, uh the Strategic Growth Council or S G C is offering a C R C program. That will fund planning, development, construction, and upgrades of neighborhood-level community resilient center. Provide shelter and resources during climate and other emergencies such as extreme heat events and poor air quality days. Uh the program will also fund ongoing year-round community services and programs such as food distribution. And workforce development training that build overall community resilience. S G C will prioritize community-serving locations across the state, uh such as schools, libraries, community centers, health clinics, and places of worship. S G C C R C program will fund planning, pre-development, and implementation activities. The city of Coachella has elected to submit a full application for an implementation grant. Uh so a total of eighty-four million dollars will be available for C R C implementation. Uh grants each ranging from one million to ten million. And implementation grants will fund new construction and upgrades to uh facilities to serve as community resilient centers. As well as services and programs that build overall community resilience. Uh so five awards will be made and grantees will be announced on December fourteenth. Uh the staff report with recommendations for award will be released on December fourth. Uh so the city will probably receive a call in December first to to be notified of award or non-award. So the city's proposal is a a very robust proposal that we are going to submit to. Uh to S G C and we will request um ten million dollars to retrofit the existing Hidden Harvest Building. Which is located near Peter Rabbit Farms uh on Peter Rabbit Lane, and it will be the city's first community resilient center. The city of Coachella and its. The city of Coachella and its partners have forged a partnership to retrofit this existing facility into a community-serving facility. Augmented to support residents, coordinate communication, distribute resources, and reduce carbon pollution while enhancing. Uh quality of life. The community or the C R C uh will also provide an opportunity to effectively work at the nexus of community resilience, emergency management. Climate change mitigation and social equity while providing opportunities for Coachella to become. Uh a more self-determining, socially connected and successful uh before, during, and after disruptions. Uh the C R C will require capital enhancements and upgrades that will improve its capacity to provide. Service in all three operating conditions, every day, disruption, and recovery. Uh the community-managed facility will be open year-round and will feature social infrastructure elements that will allow it to operate. As a neighborhood center for community building activities. So our grant application will request funds for physical infrastructure and social infrastructure, and what is meant by. Physical instruct- infrastructure is actually the capital improvements that. Will include the retrofits and the new construction of facilities such as a, such as a laundry room, uh gender-neutral bathrooms and showers. Uh commercial refrigeration storage to store medicines and food. Uh we will also uh build a commercial kitchen to feed people, but it will also incubate and educate people interested in opening a business. Uh selling food. We will also have demonstration and community gardens, a farm stand, bicycle lanes, pedestrian paths. Uh rooftop solar photovoltaic system, including battery backup. Uh shade structures, uh a barn and tool storage, and of course, the facility will have ADA accessibility. Uh structural system upgrades like H V A C. And other improvements that will help convert the facility into a community resilient center. With the capacity to be an emergency shelter as well, where more than one hundred persons can take shelter and bring their pets. Yes, you heard that right, bring their pets. Uh so the city's application will also request funding to provide the social infrastructure elements that. Uh that include integrated delivery of services and programs to share knowledge, build network, networks, and strengthen capacity. Uh the C R C will be infused with a myriad of community resilience services, programs, and activities. Uh the C R C will also meet the following functions, uh space and supplies needed for people to sleep. Food distribution or space for food preparation and storage. Uh showers and ADA compliant showers, uh re- refrigeration for medicines, laundry, pet sheltering. And portable restrooms in the event of water disruptions. Uh it will also include the following required facility features, uh an ADA-compliant facility that with gender-neutral restrooms. Uh the H V A C system, air filtration filtration system that is MRF thirteen at minimum. Broadband access, backup power generation, and our battery storage. Uh device charging capabilities for cell phones, personal communications devices, medical devices, power wheelchairs. And other assistive devices and technology, and of course, drinking water stored on site with a plan for resupply. Uh the following are the strategies, uh so the C R C will feature a workforce development and education and training strategy, which will be spearheaded by. The U C S D Office of Innovation and Commercialization. Uh it will also feature nature-based solutions and food, food security, uh which will be again led by Hidden Harvest. Uh it will also feature emergency preparedness and critical communications, which the city is required to partner with. The County Riverside Emergency Management Department. Uh we already have a part-time um staff member at our E O C that. Is is fulfilling this function already. And our techo partners to provide day-to-day general operations and oversight of the facility. They will also assist the city in activating the, the community, the C R C in the event of a catastrophic event. Uh energy resilience through grid alternatives in Land Empire and then mobility and access, the Leap Institute, uh they have their. Green Day Dados program that they will um, uh cause transportation is actually a required component. Uh so they will have their Tesla or zero emission vehicle rideshare program. Additional services and activities and programs that will be offered there include, and this is not um in all exhaustive list. Small Business Assistance Program, uh Small Business Food Incubator Program, Health Information, CERT and Emergency Trainings. Zero Emission Vehicle Rideshare Program, Demonstration and Community Gardens, Workforce Training and Education for our youth. And for also prospective small businesses, food distribution, resources for solar energy. Health workshops, resources and services, food storage, coworking spaces, meeting and training services and spaces. Training, uh training on growing food and composting, community events and convenings, and art gallery and art workshops. And grassroots community empowerment. The following is the collaborative stakeholder structure, so the city will have. Uh its partners, Hidden Harvest, Arteco, the Leap Institute, U C San Diego, Office of Innovation and Commercialization. U C Riverside is the data collection partner and then Riverside Emergency. Uh Management Department uh will be partners and the rest will be collaborative members of the C R C. And these individuals will actually offer um a myriad of services and programs that will infuse the C R C over a five-year period. Uh year-round, and so that includes uh Sarbadoya Institute Farms, uh Riverside County S B D C. Tobe, community members, the Latino Commission, Riverside University Health, the Conservation Corps. Raices, and then additional uh community members, other community, other community-based organizations, local businesses, and public agencies. And this concludes my portion of the presentation, and now I will turn it over to Gabriel Perez, uh Development Services Director.
Thanks, Lena. So moving on to what this facility would look like, so remember the city council. Did issue um moving forward with the purchase of the Hidden Harvest site. Two point zero nine acres, the building seventeen thousand eight hundred square feet. So this is a facility we think uh serves best for that community resilience facility. Uh it used to be the 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 center of town when the city first developed around the railroad. Uh so what we're also looking to do is to fund a a pedestrian crossing over the railroad. The city still owns this easement that crosses the railroad. You can see at that time, Fifth Street was called Main Street and it was the center of town. Um so we'd like to make that connection, so uh we can. Uh allow for people from downtown to to be able to cross the railroad to uh this location, but there's also vehicular access from. Peter Rabbit Lane. So this is the design of the facility. And so we did work with Sarbadoya Institute to design. The regenerative uh community gardens that would be outside. Um so if you'd look on the right side, there would be an outdoor demonstration kitchen. So that would allow like a chef or anyone to be able to come in and uh demonstrate uh the cooking of food. Um so that could be a really exciting area where you would have the uh facilities, like refrigerators, ovens. Outside to do this um for the community. Um there would be microclimates um in the community gardens, there would be room for event space, so you could potentially have weddings. Um, Kinsen Yara's birthdays that could also be indoor, but also outdoors here. There would be community plots for the uh community to be able to grow food as well. Um and this garden would be managed by Hidden Harvest. So there's a lot there, there's a lot of detail to go into with this garden. Um and the inside of the space would look like this, so we have seventeen thousand eight hundred square feet of space. Uh we did work with um. Uh our techos architect that did design the Clermont Packing House, so their architect worked with us on this design. And so start from the top left. Uh we have the covered patio that would be created, so this is currently a large loading dock area for the packing house. So that would be a community space that would be outdoor with a stage. Um that would be the entrance to the building also, um so you could see the lobby, there would be a reception area. The pink area is the cooling space, but with that could also double as emerg-. Emergency shelter as well as event space, so that would be the largest area about uh two thousand three hundred square feet. There would be two uh multi-purpose rooms to the uh just immediately below that on this floor plan. Um there would be restroom areas, also opportunities for to have showers. Um if there's a art gallery that's proposed in in green. Uh the business incubator would be in the the purple area, uh if you look on the right-hand side towards the bottom. Um so this would be the facility that the U C S D program. For the Office of Innovation and uh Commercialization would be able to operate, so uh we showed this facility to. Um the person that helps for that program called Talat Foundry, um so uh. Um David Favella, um that we met with, with Board X Brewing, they saw this facility and they told us, hey. We actually run this program out of the U C S D, we think this would actually be a great place to run this program out of. But this would also be the co- coworking space, so we've had young people come to us and tell us like, hey. We don't have a space to be able to work um aside from our homes and we need a space to be able to do that, this could be that space. Um the yellow area would be the kitchen incubator area, so this would be. Um commercial kitchen space equipment that's available uh for businesses to be able to incubate. And uh so this would be a facility that would be a food hub. Really for the community, but also would be able to be activated for emergency. Um purposes to serve the community if we ever had to do that. There would be other offices, Hidden Harvest, the uh would continue to operate out of there, they would be. Uh a very important partner uh in this time too, so they would still have their cooler um and their offices. And there would be a second floor mezzanine area for the storage of all the emergency uh equipment. And then there would be also a second floor to the administrative offices, which would be a caretaker's unit. And here are the designs of the facility, so you could see at the top, that would. Be the entrance to the building, uh there would be a loading dock for Hidden Harvest, but also for the food food hub. Or deliveries to be able to come in. Uh the bottom also shows you um the stage area for the outdoor covered area. Um there would be uh covered awnings around the whole building. Uh here's another elevation, the top elevation would be the site that faces the railroad. Um so there would be plenty of windows, you could see the. Mezzanine on the second floor, so there would be windows from the second floor that would allow natural lighting to come in. And these are some renderings of what that building would look like from the entrance. And then this would be the other side, which is the current entrance to Hidden Harvest. That's where you would see the administrative offices and the caretaker's unit. So um so there's a lot of work that I think staff did to make this a bold. Uh application to S G C, so I just wanna thank Kate for. Uh working with all of us staff and the executive team and also um Lisandro too that. Helped with this package together and uh so we're hopeful this will be successful, the application is due on Monday and we hope that council will support the resolution. Happy answering any questions.
I'll be having questions. I I think you all listened to, you know, like we we. Need this out pretty well and you know, we great, great job, I, you know, I'll make motion to approve second.
Just, just to comment, um wanna thank both of the team and uh all of the. Uh different partners that we have. I I know and I and there's a lot of new ones and I can appreciate. The fact that we're thinking through this and we're growing our partnerships. Um I think that's important, I think it's important that we that we continue to expand and try to continue to build a good network and. The private sector integration in this, to me, is it's a healthy thing. And uh it partners that are outside traditionally, the desert is a good thing too, right? And I know sometimes folks can get like a little. This is mine, what like, you know, why are they here, what whatever, but working through all of that is very important, so. Just a big kudos to you guys for putting this together. There's a motion and a second.
Yeah, go ahead and take role, councilmember Figueroa.
Aye.
Councilmember Virgen.
Aye.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Galarza.
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez.
I will move forward on the successor agency to the Coachella redevelopment agency, pretty significant straightforward item. Resolution, S A two thousand twenty-three dash zero one, approving the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule. The rocks, welcome. Well, the final stamp numbers. Uh so the finance department is just meant to approve the last final recognized obligation payment schedule. Well, you know, be the uh background, um two thousand eleven, Governor, Governor, uh Brown signed. Assembly Bill twenty-six, which. Uh ordered the dissolution, the old pre-development agencies uh through the state of California. Along with that, cities have to create a successor agency. Which uh will submit recognized obligation payments and schedules. To California Department of Finance and the County Attorney Attorney Controller. So once they get approved, this is, so you receives the funding to pay the obligations, plus administrative fees. Or the word that the city does. Now by submitting the last final drops, the city uh will send the schedule. With thirteen years of payments. Last uh administrative fees, after the. The last of final drops is approved. We don't have to send any other requests, it'll be automatically every year, and it's it's thirteen years. So the end of the obligation is in twenty thirty-seven. So we still have a long way to to go. Uh this will reduce time and therefore invested for this mission of the rocks in the finance department as well, which is, I think. What are we time to go back and forth with the county and the state controllers? As kind of uh cumbersome and repetitive, because you have to. Send it to the county, they review, they send it to state controls, they review again. And they kind of uh overlap, and then it's. It's twice as much of work, so by doing this, everything is done in one shot. We don't have to deal with it. The only thing we have to uh wait is till probably. The drop year, so they wanna review how much money is left in there, so. And if it is any, then we have to bring person. Then that will be all. So what is on the outstanding obligation, the next thirteen years? Uh right now, the obligation uh for the twenty thirteen, fourteen, and twenty sixteen series is worth fifty-five million and a half. That's how much we owe for the next thirteen years. Uh so we are asking for that money to pay the obligation. Along with that, uh we're asking for payroll expenses, hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. Uh trust fees, hundred fifty-five thousand, that's the bank for maintain the accounts. And and uh the outreach is also that we were. We calculated something out fifty-five thousand dollars for the thirteen years. And after the obligation I've paid. That's a kind of bad news, uh this, we get about twenty-three million eight hundred dollars to. Pay the obligation, so when is that, when is, when we finish with this payment payments? The county is gonna take that money, put it in the pot again. And with this to be that money, so we are not gonna get that money until we just redistribute it. Between Coachella Riverside and although there are other. Agencies, so here's a list of everybody who gets a little money from that. And probably more, because I got this from two thousand eleven, so I'm sure there's more agencies. That all districts actually that are getting part of that. Money as well. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for for all of those uh that were not familiar with pre-development. It was an awesome tool, uh in terms of what we could do and. That three point seven million, what we use it to pay our bond obligations. About twenty percent of it went to fund affordable housing and we built a lot of affordable housing, so now we don't have it. We don't have it, so it went to the county as well, so. And same thing, those uh loans that were given for the first time on buyers, so they recouped that and then put it back in the. On the pot and it's redistributed, so kind of doubled deep on that one, because.
Yeah.
It was ours.
Yeah.
So. And it is what it is, so. Yeah, I know, but if if redevelopment was available, we would have been in good position to. Have bonded probably years ago and have done an upgrade, different improvements in the city, but. Yeah. Can't do it if you don't have.
That's what happened.
Thank you, thank you. I'll motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, uh all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and any knows, and abstentions, then. Move on to item number twenty-seven, this is the city of Coachella, six-cycle housing element, general permit amendment number twenty. Number twenty-one dash zero one, let me go ahead and open up.
zero one. Let me go up in the hearing and slam forty-five.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. So we're finally here with six cycle housing element. We're required to approve a housing element every cycle that is required by the state and this would be for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine. This is required element of our general plan. We did work closely with LWC consulting in preparation of this plan. This plan will allow us to be able to accommodate the allocation that we have from the state for the next till two thousand twenty-nine. So that total amount was seven thousand eight hundred eighty-six units that we have to be able to plan for in the city of Coachella. So we do have Catherine Slama that is representing LWC that will provide an overview of what's here in your standpoint. Hi Catherine, and also David Bergman.
Good evening. Thank you, Director Perez. Give me one moment. I'm just going to pull up our presentation. And we can get, we can get going here. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Miss, as Director Perez mentioned, I'm Catherine Slama. I'm a director at Lisa West Consulting and I have been the project manager for the city of Coachella's six cycle housing element update. With me tonight is another director from LWC, David Bergman. We understand it's been a very, very eventful and very informative. We really actually really enjoyed listening in to all of the proclamations and presentations tonight, but it is getting late. So we will try to keep it brief and quite informative for the council tonight. So we'll go through just some housing element basics. A little bit of the process. It's been a several year process. We'll go into the key components of the housing element that are noteworthy for your consideration tonight and next steps and the ultimate recommendation from staff is to move forward with adoption of the six cycle housing element. So a little bit of background for anyone who's on the council or anyone in chambers and viewing tonight who's not familiar with housing elements, housing element is the required component of the city's general plan, which is updated every eight years. This is the most heavily regulated component of a city's general plan. And it is regulated by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD for short. And the sixth cycle covers the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-nine planning period. The regional housing needs allocation often called Rena for short is the biggest component of any community's housing element statewide. This is the distribution of housing accommodation needs for each community over the next eight years. And it funnels from the state to the city through the SCAG jurisdiction and it is allocated according to population growth, previous unmet housing needs and a desire for an appropriate jobs, housing balance that is set from the regional agency. So this is not a number that the city identifies themselves. This is the number that has been funneled from the state to the city of Coachella in order to make sure that the city of Coachella is accommodating the appropriate amount of housing from the state's understanding over the next eight years. So this is the Coachella six cycle housing element Rena. As Director Perez mentioned, it's seventy-eight sixty-seven units total. It is more than the previous allocation, which is not unusual for jurisdictions, the sixth cycle that we've seen an uptick in housing element Rena allocations across the state. But the interesting to note that there is a reduction in the overall percentage of lower income housing needs that have been assigned to the Coachella city. Every housing element in California must demonstrate that it complies with state law and therefore must include a variety of components to demonstrate compliance with all of the very, very, very specific state laws. So the housing element for the city of Coachella has been organized to directly ensure that each component of state law has been adequately addressed this cycle. So there's we have reviewed the policy and programs from this fifth cycle to understand the adequacy of previous policies and update them as necessary. The city has undergone a housing needs assessment to understand the existing and projected needs of housing for various communities and components of the, of the city of Coachella. There is an adequate sites inventory analysis, and this is the component that demonstrates that the city has adequately and to accommodate that Rena number. We'll get to that just a little bit. There's also an assessment of housing resources, which is land and also financial and administrative resources. There is a lot of time spent in the housing one talking about housing constraints. So what are governmental constraints? Things that the city has control over? As well as non-governmental constraints, things that the city does not have control over that contribute to any constraints on housing production in the past? And how can the city contribute to alleviating any constraints moving forward? And then of course, the, a major component of any housing element and for the city of Coachella's housing element is the implementation plan. These are the city's goals, policies and action items over the next eight years to ensure that your housing goals are being met, that the needs are being met for your community members. So the sixth cycle for, for those in the council, those of the community who are listening in, the sixth cycle is an interesting and much more complex housing element cycle than in previous years. The cycle has seen significant increases in that Rena number, that regional housing needs allocation number across the board throughout, throughout the state. And that has made it significantly more difficult to justify everybody's housing element statewide. But an additional added factor to that is that there is consistent, consistently new and changing policy from the state level. So jurisdictions not only have to meet new and increasing Rena allocation numbers, they're also having to meet new technical or regulatory requirements and heightened needs to provide justification of the sites inventory and all of the analyses that we talked about. The legislation in part, just to note, is why that over in the nearly two hundred cities in the SCAG region, less than half of them met the twenty twenty-one deadline. So you know, there, there's most of the cities in the SCAG region did not meet the twenty twenty-one deadline in October. And actually, most of the cities in SCAG have still not yet received that certificate, the HD certificate, ACT certification. So it is a very much a complicated process. This is not a challenge that has been viewed lightly by a lot of the communities across the state and, and particularly the SCAG region. So this is a very challenging document to get through the state's very very aggressive lens for technical compliance. So your peer cities in the SCAG region and in the Coachella Valley are you know, you're, you're in like company with where we're at in terms of how it's housing element compliance and timing. So just a little bit about housing element process. So how's this gone? Right? So the, the six cycle housing one has resulted in an overall longer project timeline. Coachella has undergone multiple rounds of review, like most peer cities and has undergone, sorry, multiple rounds of review with HCD. The project kicked off in twenty twenty and in that time period since twenty twenty, the city and the consultant team and the community have worked through several rounds of review, several iterations of the housing element and actually submitted several rounds of revisions to HCD because the city has been working quite closely with the state reviewers to ensure that the document that you have in front of you tonight for adoption is consistent with state law. And in fact, the planning commission reviewed this version la- back in July and recommended the element for adoption. The city has undergone a lot of meetings with the public over the past few years and extensive coordination with HCD, as I mentioned. The last draft in front of HCD, in front of council tonight has been available since July and the staff has received preliminary a preliminary letter of compliance from HCD back in July twenty-seventh, July twenty-seventh. So this is indicating that upon adoption and completion, excuse me, and completion with the required rezonings, which have already actually preceded the housing element adoption. The state will be able to issue a letter of certification. So we're, we're really wrapping up here in the process of meeting all of the mandated requirements for compliance with state law. So I'll go real, you know, kind of quite briefly through some of the components. There was a lot of attention from the state with respect to the sites inventory. So the city spent a lot of time working with this, working internally and working with the state to make sure that any sites that were included in the site's inventory had existing and planned access to water and sewer infrastructure. This was a very key component of the site's inventory because the city wanted to make sure that when you're identifying sites for development for housing for the community and the growth of the community, that these are developable sites today. These are not requiring a lot of significant reinvestment. There obviously is a lot of opportunities for investment in sites, but the site's inventory as it's developed today this makes sure that things are in full sites and they're close to infrastructure and they're close to resources and other amenities that the Coachella community has. So the community was able to demonstrate that there was an overall surplus under the general plan land use policy regulations. So there's several, there's an actual excess of capacity in the city of Coachella of over three thousand units. There's an excess of capacity at all income levels. So this is very significant. This shows that the city of Coachella has a lot of land that is either vacant or underutilized with access to infrastructure and amenities for, that is available for developers to develop a variety of income levels. And this is not a mandate that the city develops any of these units. This is just demonstrating that there is capacity for private developers to develop land or nonprofit developers, of course. So this is the map that demonstrates the distribution of sites across the city of Coachella. So as I mentioned previously, there's emphasis on making sure that sites have adequate access to infrastructure. I'm including water and sewer capacity. So you'll see that there is a lot of the sites inventory focused on the downtown area and areas in this, more of the central city. This map is actually really important because this is a way that the city staff can track and monitor and report on housing element implementation over time. And as projects come in, the staff and planning commission can review projects against this housing element sites inventory to see how well the city is.
Gabriel, can, can, can we hold on one second? Just a, a something that has come up real quick. So the state seems to be asking us that we plan housing around available water and sewer infrastructure. How is that differing from say Laughco, where they're trying to take away existing spheres that have water and sewer infrastructure for the city? And can we use this state approach as a kind of a strategy with Laughco? I know I'm kind of deviating, but it's right on this whole housing strategy and saying, hey, we need these lands to meet our housing obligation. And can we tell the state to introduce a new requirement on Laughco that says, hey, you need to consider cities housing or housing strategies vis a vis the water and sewer infrastructure? Maybe it's just a point that's like, this is something I've never heard in a while. Like where, where's your water? Where's your sewer? Plan housing around it. And yet we have somewhat of a mismatch where you have Laughco that's saying, oh, you got water and sewer out here. So we're going to take your spheres away. There's a mismatch in the policy there and in terms of, in terms of how they're addressing that. So anyways, continue.
I'm happy to continue. Director Perez, did you want to, is there anything that you wanted to comment on or do we want to keep going?
No, no, I think we can keep going, but yeah.
Okay. Oh, yes. The points. Yeah, understood. Right. I think, I mean, I mean, with respect, I think that this is you know, demonstrable of, you know, the desire to produce housing, but maybe I know other, other policy issues that, you know, for, to, to reconcile, of course. So to demonstrate and emphasize that the city has available land resources within proximity to resources and infrastructure. The city was able to identify plenty of adequate land resources at a variety of adequate densities and locations to comply with state requirements. Let me just go one more slide here. There we go. And another, another sorry, apologies for that. I clicked the wrong button. Another major emphasis of this six cycle housing element itself and something that the city worked a lot, worked closely with HCD on was compliance with Assembly Bill six eight six for I'm sorry. Okay. Assembly Bill six eight six is affirmatively furthering fair housing. This is a very new requirement. That's actually a brand new requirement for the sixth cycle. It is, it requires cities to analyze compliance with fair housing laws and also assess the city's geography with respect to different socioeconomic and geographic and demographic factors, including just where does the, you know, how does the community exist today? We know where are there existence of pockets of any pockets of segregation from any protected classes, whether that's by race or ethnicity, age or income or disability? Are there equal access to housing opportunities across protected classes? And protected classes include race, ethnicity, age, income and disability. This is a extension of the federal fair housing act. So this city spent a lot of time trying to interpret AB six eight six, Assembly Bill six eight six. Because official HCD interpretation on how to satisfy this requirement was not issued until late into twenty twenty-one. So the cities spent a lot of time working with the state to understand the you know, and not understand the, the composition of, of the Coachella, but mostly just demonstrate compliance with fair housing laws because the city does comply with all fair housing laws. So the city demonstrated that they comply with all fair housing laws. And also how the city is promoting and uplifting a variety of special needs groups and the targeted improvement program that the city already has in place to address any special needs groups and any pockets of special needs, including, you know, access to opportunities and understanding the resources and services that are needed for any persons that are currently unhoused. So this is a, this was a very large challenge for the city of Coachella as well as communities throughout California that are still struggling to demonstrate compliance with this really new and nuanced requirement. But the city again has received a preliminary understanding from HCD that they have been pre-certified and just contingent upon adoption of the housing element and completion of the rezonings. So what happens next? There, the most important program beside, the most important component besides the site's inventory is the housing implementation program. It's a guidebook of actions that the city is going to take to achieve the housing related goals. The implementation plan of the housing element has seven goals, thirty-nine policies and fifty programs or action items. And this is really the directive for staff and all of the departments and community to work together to achieve the city's housing related to goals. The site's inventory is a way to track development and progress towards the affordability targets and The site's inventory is a way to track development and progress towards the affordability targets and unit production overall. And every year, the city staff reports out progress on the housing element implementation to HCD as well as the city council. So this is the time every year annually to understand and assess how the city is doing with respect to its housing related goals and production and affordability. Make changes to your implementation programs and policies as necessary. So there is the six cycle housing element in summation, next steps. The housing element has already been submitted and received pre-certification. If the housing element is adopted tonight, it will go to HCD Housing, the Department of Housing and Community Development for final review and certification. And if there's any questions, everything that has been available throughout the entire project is available on the project website and Director Pres has been available for any questions and comments. And I can close out or Director Pres, would you like me to go to the resolution or I can close for questions and comments from the council? But I will stop sharing so we can all see each other.
Thank you. Is there any questions? I, I just want to say thank you to everybody. This has been about a year, right? We've been on it about a year, a little bit more.
A little bit longer.
More than a year.
A little longer. But it's, 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 I'm glad that we're here and we've done a lot of good work. I'm, I'm still like, I, I, I think we're pretty progressive in a lot of our housing policies and everything that we're doing. I'm a little bit just concerned whenever, when it comes to like the state funding to support this, you know, and, and while they're going to be, well, they want to be, you know, kind of punitive and saying, hey, we're not going to give you X, Y, or Z if you're not implementing. But, you know, the funding in order to do some of these things puts the city like Coachella at a disadvantage and it started to become even more apparent on, like even when you fund for, like trying to fund bridges, you know, and, and like they're not funding anything that adds capacity. Well, how do you, how do you bring in, you know, eighty, two hundred or, you know, eight thousand homes that we're going to do here? And then expect us to keep a rural road? You know what I mean? To accommodate the traffic. And so those are kind of like the mismatches and, and I totally get the state saying, hey, we need to build our share. We want to build our share. We want to do it, but it's like, don't punish us because we're rural, we're suburban. You know, and so those are, those are things that we need to kind of just let HCD and like all Sacramento know, like, we want to do it. We just need help in order to make sure that community members can go to, from work, from, you know, school, et cetera. And then at the same time, like the house, like the implementation, I don't think there's another city out here in the Coachella Valley that's wanting to implement affordable housing. Even though we've done good with getting projects and getting funding, we could do better if we had more money, right? And so I think, you know, continue to kind of just talk about the housing dollars that we need in order to close the gap is going to be important. Outside of the guy, outside of that, we, we've talked about this a lot. Is there a motion? Or let me, anybody in the public like to address the city council? See now I'm going to go and close the public hearing, make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Second, there's a motion, there's a second, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Figueroa.
Aye.
Councilmember Virgen.
Aye.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Galarza.
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez.
Aye.
Move on now to council reports on subcommittees. Start to my right.
Hmm, I know, we collect my notes. I have my, I'm a soapbox person, talk about mosquitoes all the time. But, you know, I had the mosquito vector control meeting yesterday and, you know, the big topic at the meeting was post Hurricane Hillary, but also pre Hurricane Hillary. They, they do a lot of outreach in the East Valley, giving out mosquito repellent and informing community members. And I think the big thing is informing our neighbors. If you see city in water, make sure you dump it on a consistent basis because there is a large increase in mosquito with West now, but also St. Louis.
Egypt.
And the Egypti also, but those are more in more urban areas, but there's been a big increase of those type of mosquitoes and those vector issues as well. So just informing people of that is very important. They were to attend the All Valley Mayor's Luncheon last week, but also this, we can have the Sebag Public Safety Committee and we had a presentation from the county about the total damage that occurred in the county, in the county as a whole. And so it was over a hundred and forty-four million dollars in damage, but you know, it's still being assessed. And so it's very important that if people haven't reported any damage to report it through the county portal because it's very important that we as a county and the city report all the damage that occurred both in residential and in larger scales. So that was one of the larger items of discussion. One item that came in the Sebag was Mylar balloon. City Palm Desert Band Mylar balloons and parts. And so that came up for discussion about Mylar balloons and the cause it does for electrical outages. Seemed to be a large issue for electric, electric outages because of them burning poles. So this is just my reports. I went to the state of the school district this morning. A very, very great event to be able to see what our partners in the school district are doing as well. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Awesome, man.
I have my subcommittee meetings coming up for this month. So tomorrow, Sebag, our energy committee meeting. So pretty excited, looking forward to that one. And then I believe we're going to have an economics subcommittee meeting for the city, probably within like the next two weeks. So we'll have that. And next week, most of us are going to be at the League of Cities. So we'll be in Sacramento. I'm looking forward to that first time as a council member. So exciting stuff. It's a busy month. And it's been a very busy summer. I, I know that some of us thought we were going to slow down in the summer and it feels like it was a joke. You know, we got storms left and right. And so it's been very busy, but nonetheless, looking forward to all the good work. That's it for me.
That's Mayor Delgado.
Thank you. I do, I do want to address quickly the comments that were given or provided earlier. I mean, it is a legitimate concern and I respect their criticism. I do think that there's a misunderstanding. They seem to think that my comments were towards employees and quite the contrary. I have a great deal of respect for our employees who work really hard all weekend. And so my comments were solely for the city manager. And I want to make sure that there is that separation. And my disappointment was because he was on vacation and, you know, my feelings toward it is not going to change. I do think he, he should have been here. I know that there was another city manager I heard at the League of, at the annual mayor luncheon. He was on vacation as well. He was in Greece. And so the same thing is that I, I do think the city manager should have been here. I know our city manager was not out of the country. It was an annual college get together. And so it's not going to change. My comments are not going to change towards that. But I, I do want to address that at no time where they're ever towards my, the employees, but rather because he wasn't there with them. So I do want to just clarify that. There was another great, great question towards me is what policies have I brought forward? And that's a great, great question. Also, I wrote down here just some of the policies that I've asked for. One of them was evaluating short-term rentals because they're, the homes that are being sold are being put fifty, sixty thousand dollars above asking price because we have companies that are coming in and buying, you know, six, seven houses in one street. And that's happening in the new housing developments. So I have asked for an evaluation and looking at a policy to reduce it. I still respect people who want to have a short-term rental. It's good side money. I completely support and agree with it, but it does become a problem when someone has four, five, six, and we're not prioritizing, you know, that concern as well as the loss of revenue. So if we have companies that are coming in, buying up an entire block, that's also additional revenue that we could be having because we haven't addressed the fees that come with that as well. Other cities are charging a thousand dollars. I, what, what is our fee that we have?
I think it's just a basic, a basic business license fee, like one twenty-five, one thirty-five.
So it's, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars to get the business license fee. And so when we compare it to other cities who are addressing short-term rentals, there's a big loss of revenue from people who, you know, have again, six, seven houses. And so I haven't seen that come through. I've also asked for, for updating and evaluating code requirements because I do feel like some of them are just dated. And so not only does that help our residents when it comes to things that they want to build, whether it was that carport, but it also helps reduce code violations, the fees that come along with it. And we have a lot of folks who, you know, are not paying the fines. I do think that some of those policies are dated. I do think that they need to be evaluated. And I think they need to be updated to basically address some of the concerns that we have. The business support, I probably asked for it like maybe thirty times. So when we got ARPA money back in two thousand twenty-one, I had asked for half a million dollars to be put aside for the small business community. We know they're the ones that got hit the hardest. We have not given any American Rescue Plan Act funds to those businesses to, to help with the permit fees, to help with application fees for education, training, code violations. These are all things that are hindering and making it difficult for them to get back into, you know, the money that they were making before and even provide opportunities for them to grow. Childcare support, I've asked for this many times as well. And that's to expand and provide support to the childcare folks that we do have that are operating other homes. I cannot stress enough that in the city of Coachella, we have three, three, three kiddos in each house. And sometimes when you have a combined family, we have five. It's extremely, extremely costly. And also is that we don't have enough space. We don't have, we have childcare providers and they're not enough. We don't have enough. So I've also asked for American Rescue Plan Act funds to be provided for them as well. Public safety, I have asked for public safety to be addressed over and over and over. I can't ask anymore. But, you know, I said it before and I'll say it again, public safety is the top concern in the city of Coachella. And we have an obligation to have these conversations openly about what our budget is and what we should be planning for, what other cities have. We hear about speed over and over in the city of Coachella. We're doing roundabouts. I don't think any other city has more speed bumps than the city of Coachella. We have a lot. Why? Because there's a speeding problem. We don't have any traffic deputies. We don't have someone who's out there holding people accountable. So you, you know, to some degree, it is kind of like the wild, wild west here in the sense of people are speeding and they know that there's no repercussions for it. First time home buyers program. I've asked for this over and over as well. We had one in the past and I remember there was a lot of challenges to it. And it was also difficult, but there was a lot of requirements where folks were basically declining from the beginning. So not only have I asked for it, but also to evaluate how we can make it easier for first time home buyers, you know, young couples to be able to purchase a home. We have a lot of outdated policies, a lot when it comes to special events, when it comes to entertainment permits. I know when I got on here, one of the first things that I wanted to update was the city of Coachella, even though we're seventy-five years old, we didn't have any policy in place to provide things in Spanish. So while people were getting notices, you know, in their homes, it was never provided in, in Spanish. And I know that might sound silly, but just we have so many policies that are outdated that we need to evaluate. They're not difficult to update. One of the other things as well is advocating for the Sesaf Chavez Street. It needs a lot of attention. It needs a lot of love. I understand that we've, you know, prioritized Fifty Avenue Forty-Eight, Grapefruit Boulevard, but I do think that we need to, you know, prioritize Sesaf Chavez moving forward. I think it's going to address some of the issues that we have going on there. So that's just some of the stuff that I've asked for. And so it's a great question. And to the city manager, do you know when we can see some of this stuff come forward?
I'll talk to staff and then maybe guys, dates and.
Thank you.
For these items.
Thank you. Um, for the committees that I serve on, I serve on the Transportation Committee for Southern California Association of Governments. We had a joint policy committee addressing SoCal Connect. SoCal Connect is a regional effort to address transportation, housing and energy. And there's a timeline of when everything is happening. So it's on its way to being adopted as a first draft before regional council. The Palm Springs Airport just did their first draft on the master plan. And I know I've touched on it a little bit before, but there's a luggage expansion. There's additional terminals projected. So the city of Palm Springs, their airport needs about an additional thirty terminals in the next two decades to accommodate population growth. Right now, it's about four terminals behind. So you have these big airlines coming in like Southwest and it wasn't built to accommodate those big airplanes like the seven forty-sevens. So that's just some of the stuff going on. I do have a homelessness committee next week. And that's pretty much it for my committee updates. I'm looking forward to Egrito. I'm looking forward to the conference that we have next week in Sacramento. And, you know, I'm happy to come back and report an update on what we learned out there. Thank you.
Mayor Potem.
I, you know, just again, thank you all for still being here with us. It's already after ten and and being with us every day and done a great job. It was great. You know, I think it was my favorite thing today was the license. I mean, a lot, we did a lot of, what a lot of presenters reminded me a lot about my youth and my sort of like my why and how I got started seeing the license students here and reminiscing over time. And knowing that a lot of these, you know, students want to be able to make, you know, greater impact to our community. You know, the community where, you know, they're asking for, you know, talking about the parks and they recognize a lot has been done. Today we voted on all great projects like on Avenue Two Three and, you know, the Tonto Park, you know, it needs a lot of love. And so, you know, like seeing that, you know, the SDC Community Resilience Center, Innovation Grant and La Ronda Los Muertos, you know, just to list a few, but you know, great projects, community that bring in our youth that, you know, invest in our communities in a, in a positive, restorative way, instead of a punitive way. And so, you know, I think this is a, you know, great approach that our city is taking. And obviously we can grow and continue working with our, with our partners like Oasis and many others. Just, you know, just some events I'll be attending. I, I haven't had any meetings or committee meetings, but was at the All Valley Mayor's Luncheon. That was very great. I think the mayor, you know, represented as well. I, you know, I'd hate to be up there because it looks like a super smash, but it was like you guys, it was like a bunch of people that like to talk and then you guys are trying to like talk over each other. But I think the moments you've got, I think you were able to represent as well and talk about the growth of our city. So thanks for being up there and, and representing our city while it's, uh, is great, you know, continuing to see. And then maybe hopefully in the near future, they bring that conference further east, that event for the recent and maybe you, you know, I emailed them. The organizers the next day, I'm like, hey, then maybe this thing should be like an evening thing because the moderator was trying to like control the time, like nobody's respecting the time. And, and then people were leaving by one because it's like during the day, all we have to go over to work. Whereas we should, you know, you're trying to be in dozens of people together to talk. So perhaps, you know, an evening that we can all stay there and have a drink and we'll have to go back to the office. The CBN, if I saved the district, it was great attending this morning. I even got this little cool cup, I mean, water bottle, but nice thing. It was great learning from the superintendent, talking about their three topics of health and wellness, building capacity and academic and curriculum, building all that and, and working with the school, school district. For me, listening to my brother as well, who's the board president there, speak and represent our community very well. He was very proud of, proud of that. I look forward to some upcoming events to move forward to the futures. Egrito is coming up this Sunday. Thanks to our team for putting that together and and, you know, I, I'm going to stop by and have some, you know, have some fun with all of you and you know, get a check, check the music, celebrate Mexican independence and the independence of many Latin American countries. I'm very proud of my Mexican heritage. I'm very proud of my Mexican heritage, uh, and, and I'm also proud to, I know, so it's good to celebrate both. We get to have fourth of July a few months ago and now. Mexican independence. Um, I'll be missing this year's League of Cities Conference, so. Uh, uh, you know, uh, share some of the knowledge y'all learned and. You know, bring back some swag back, swag or something. Uh, but I will be attending, uh, an Aleo, uh, Paul's, the Aleo Paul's soon on emergency response to management. I submitted an application to attend to that and, and I was admitted, so I'll be there next week, Monday through Wednesday. And, uh, but yeah, uh, look forward to connecting with all of you and connecting once more to you at the end of the month. Thank you.
All right, um. But I'll keep it brief. Uh, thank you, everybody. It was a good summer. It was a hard summer. It was a hot summer. It was a summer in which, uh, we got a lot of hurricanes and. I, I really just want to keep it on a positive note. I think you guys have done an outstanding job and. Uh, it's important that the leadership tells you that. You know, from, from the head all the way down to everybody that's part of the team. Talking positive about what we do and how we do it is just a reassuring message to keep, keep at it and get out of boys, out of girls. And then, uh, really, uh, looking forward to kind of these next few six months. Uh, we got a little bit of work to do as it comes to some of the streets, so putting together that, uh, schedule of. How we're gonna go about repairing some of our streets in the cities is very, very important. Uh, I want to get a little schedule, uh, uh, Gabriel going as well with the park on, uh, Avenue fifty-two. We got eight point five million. Sounds like we've made a lot of progress with respect to the acquisition of the property. And so, uh, I want to have a clear schedule and I want to tell the community and be transparent with them. This is coming and if we need to have a, a couple of, a little bit more dialogue with them, let's do it. Uh, I, I think that's something that, uh, that folks are really kind of just looking. Looking forward, uh, to and are excited about. And so we got to put that on their, on the radar and schedule and just be really loud with it. You know, uh, uh. The mayor's luncheon, it's cool. You know, I, I think we've, 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 we've done that and, and. Uh, you know, I brought up two points and something to consider and, and I want us to consider more. Uh, missing middle housing, Gabriel, I brought that up and it's part of our housing element and. How can we incentivize that? But then the other side of it is that. I brought up the, the kind of an ending point that there is a lot of change and, you know, organizations like SCAG that are. Trying to push a lot of these renewable policies and electric vehicles and we're, we're, we're doing that. We're, we're gonna get on that. But how do we maintain a balance and how do we really think about it from a balanced perspective? Because. We derive a lot of our revenue from fleet, from gas. From diesel and, and we got to really think about a really good position and saying, hey. Uh, you know, kind of like poop, moving to an, an all-electric vehicle kind of economy. There's a lot of negative externalities that are gonna occur that we don't even understand. For example. Like what is the impacts of doing some very, very aggressive mining that we've never done in the history of mankind? And then looking at all that byproduct. Compared to, and then also talking about the impact of doing away with. Just, uh, uh, the combustible engine. And so we, we really need to think about that and really stay on that. To really like figure out like how we can advocate as a city. We're creating a balance and not this extreme. It's like, oh, we, we want all EVs. It's like, no, you, you, like, you know, combustible cars. Can be clean and, and we know that for a fact because the last twenty years. Combustible cars have made a lot of progress in being cleaner and be more efficient. And, and, and the like. And so we just really need to kind of think through that long term so that we can advocate in Sacramento that. That we need a balance. We, we do need a balance and our city depends on it from a revenue standpoint. I mean, we get, we. Look at all the trucks that pick up fuel. At, uh, at, at our car sta, at our, at our diesel station over there and travel lots. And then look at all the cars and people that, that have, we have working out here that have three fifties, four fifties. And they require like. And all the fleet we have as well, and we try to come, like convert to that is gonna be extremely difficult and our grids aren't gonna be able to take it, so. It's a lot of things to think about. It's different than policy changes. It's like more forward looking. It's, it's like, let's, let's look at, you know, big. Heavy. Infrastructure and trying to bring money. But, uh, but I'm proud of you guys. We, we applied for a lot of grants this summer too. And I, I expect in the next nine, six months, we're gonna know how we've done. And if we get one of three or one of five. That's good because it'll keep us moving. With that, we're dismissed.
The city manager?
No comments.